Not the work, make sure it's the council meeting, not the work session. Great. Are you? Rob, are we ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 7th council meeting.
You're welcome.
And Suzanne, if you would please do roll call for us.
Thank you. Mayor LaBarre is absent. Mayor Protem Case.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ott.
Here.
Councilmember Zuluwaga.
Yes.
Thank you. Will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
All right. Item three on the agenda is ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And item A is an appointment to the Downtown Development Authority. And we'll have Suzanne LeClair, our city clerk, present for us.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As council will recall from the last council meeting, you directed the city clerk's office to continue advertising the vacant positions on the DDA. We continue advertising them, and we received an application from David Maharis, who was currently on the DDA and has reapplied to continue his term. Saw him, there he is. He's here in the audience for council to interview this evening. And following his interview, if council appoints him, I'm prepared to administer his oath of office.
Thank you. David, would you like to come to the podium, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Guess I should call you Mr. Maharis. I don't say it right. We'll get it all together, hang on.
Hi, so I'm here. I mean, I kind of jumped off the DDA because I have a potential conflict of interest. You know, I've worked with the Tava House developers at their previous two sites and have done a number of other projects in the Springs with Derek in that group. So if there was someone else that was willing to jump in, I was more than willing to let it go. But if we have a vacancy, I'm more than willing to stay on and help out in that capacity.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No question, but I do want to provide testimony that we did have two projects presented at the DDA meeting on Tuesday. Mr. Maharis did recuse himself.
And as I understand it, Rusty, as our liaison, if you could help the council, there are two projects that are being considered by the DDA at this time, neither of which have been selected. And so there, at this point, it's not a given that Mr. Maharis will be involved with the development.
Am I correct? That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
Yes, David.
There's a big tower.
Fire mitigation. I've got plenty of water right here if we could deal with that. David, I, hang on a second here. I appreciate you stating your conflict of interest. And it is a concern that I have with the DDA. You have conducted yourself very professionally, and I appreciate that. I'm wondering that because this is kind of a this is a fluid contract that's going on, no pun intended. Whether what you see your involvement would be, should the contract be awarded to clients that you already have?
I mean, obviously involvement with the DDA would be limited to discussion on items, not associated with that particular development. You know, I would look to assist in infrastructure for the overall parcel and, you know, kind of guide that discussion. But, but obviously recuse myself when it's specific to conversations with the Tava House developer.
Yeah, and that seems to be really the only focus that the DDA has at this time is that whole Woodland Station development. Would you agree?
I think that's a big focus. I think there's also additional, you know, TIF agreements coming in and some other items that we're working on that are smaller that, you know, relocating the train and relocate or, you know, handing over the train development to the Historical Society and those kind of things. So there's, there's other items that we vote on and discuss, not just the Tava House development.
So the area of conflict of interest with the DDA is pretty strong in my mind. It's not being addressed by anyone. You have conducted yourself professionally in that process, so I'm not saying that about you. But when you look at your interaction that you've got with the companies that you work with, with the Tava House people, with what's a crossover? Is there any crossover?
I mean, I don't see any crossover related to the DDA development. I currently have, I don't know, seven or eight active projects is one of the only civil engineers in town, you know, that has their office in town. So I'm really busy with the city and, you know, continue that interaction. But small town and a lot of people do know each other and work together. So I work with a lot of the different developers in town.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? All right, I'd be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to appoint David, I'm sorry, is it Maharis?
Yes.
To the DDA for whatever the term is. Sorry, sorry, Suze. What's the term expire? Three years or?
Three, I'm sorry.
Okay.
A second.
All right, any further discussion, counsel? All right, Suzanne?
Okay, counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel. This motion has passed unanimously. And Mayor Protem, if I may, administer oath of office.
Okay. I'm David Maharis.
I, David Maharis.
I can't say it.
That's fine. Do solemnly swear.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances. Of the City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of member of the Downtown Development Authority.
Of member of the Downtown Development Authority. Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you, counsel.
Congratulations.
Very much.
All right, counsel, we're moving to item 3B, approval of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board amended bylaws. And we have Cindy Keating present.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Tonight, I'm going to pass this project over to our park board chair, Jeff Webb. And he's going to run through the changes and the reasoning and some of the discussions that the board had along these amendments. I did want to inform you that the original bylaws were adopted in 1998. And the last amendment that had taken place was in 2016. Jeff, will you join me at the podium, please?
Hello, good evening. My name is Jeff Webb. I'm on my second term now on Parks Board. It's quite an honor. I currently serve as the chair. And on behalf of all of the board, we certainly appreciate your time and interest and consideration. So I'll talk through the changes that we, as a board, discussed and unanimously voted to recommend to you. But before we do, just as a way of a little bit of background, I think it's worth mentioning, I think it's a very exciting time right now for the Parks Department. So I, for one, love being on the board. But I think the staff at the city, the work that Cindy does, is just excellent. I think we see that every day. When I talk to people around the community, the Parks Department and the park system is one of the things they love the best. I'm also extraordinarily excited right now about, about the board. I think we have an excellent board. And tonight we have Kathy, Don, and Jerry from the board. And I think the entire board really is excellent, diverse, interested, and knowledgeable. And so it's a very exciting time. And then on top of all of that, we have the Parks Master Plan, which I know you're all aware of. It's a planning process. It's really a once-in-a-decade opportunity to create a shared vision for Parks and Woodland Park. So it's a very exciting time. So with all of that as background, we, as the board, think it's the right time to sort of update and modernize the bylaws. So I'll take you through those changes. And as I get started, I should also thank Jerry Smith. He was really part of the impetus for us really taking a look at these bylaws. It was something that was needed, so thank you for that. So we're proposing really, I think, three buckets of changes essentially. So the first concerns eligibility. So as we know, the Woodland Park Parks Department serves citizens of Woodland Park. It also serves citizens outside of city limits. We know that. It's sort of a regional park system. The bylaws have always recognized that by allowing for members of Teller County that live outside of city limits to serve on the board. What we're proposing is that we also include citizens of El Paso County. That will better reflect the service area. It will provide a broader background in terms of members. And what we'll do, what's, what's going to remain is that on our seven-member board, at least four members have to be residing within city limits. So this change won't allow people living outside of the city to sway the board unduly. But it will allow the representation on the board to better reflect the service area of the department. The next sort of bucket of changes really is pretty simple. We're going to add a secretary position as officer. We currently do not have a secretary. Cindy, the director, currently serves sort of as a de facto secretary. We think it's appropriate the board takes that on. There's times when Cindy, for example, has to be taking notes and we may have a discussion and need her input. And it's just simply not something that is the best use of her time. So we'd like to pose a secretary who would take care of minutes and all of the traditional secretary sort of functions on a board. And then the last sort of bucket of changes has to do with meetings and notifications. So really about accessibility. So we saw during COVID, I think you and many of the other boards and commissions had to go to virtual meetings for a period. The current bylaws don't, don't allow for that. So we want to make sure to modernize and bring that up to sort of today's technology and allow for virtual meetings, should those be necessary, as well as virtual votes. In addition, the bylaws state that members on the board have to be notified of meetings by mail. We'd like to change that to email. Seems to make, make for more efficient sort of function. And then finally, the bylaws, as they're currently written, say that the public notification of meetings needs to go out in newspapers, a lot of different venues. What we found is not everybody's reading the newspaper these days. So updating so that the, the notification of meetings shows up on the city's website. So that was our thinking. We think these are all measures that, that just help streamline efficiency and really get us as a, as a board prepared to take on this next year of exciting challenges. So as I mentioned, the board, we, as a board, discussed, there was sort of a lot of back and forth. We really went through every line of the bylaws. These were the big changes. We saw the board did vote unanimously 7-0 to adopt them as a board. So with that, if there's any questions, we'd love to be able to try to answer them for you.
Go ahead, Russ.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Neal.
That's right. I put my jacket back. I think the the effort was great. It needed to be updated. There, I have two comments. And I think we'll get an approval to, to, to what you've done, but maybe tweaks on the language. And I'm going to point out some things I noted. The first thing I noted when I went and reviewed, because I really read it, is Article 1, Purpose and Authority. You have a paragraph that discusses the purpose of the Parks and Recs Board. There's no addressing the authority. So I would either go back and add some form of what the authority is, what, what are you empowered to do or delete and authority? So it's just the purpose. But that's what's a comment. Second is on the Article 2, Section 1, in listening to what the intent was to expand it so that El Paso County was included. I'll point out that the way it's worded, and maybe Nina, if we look at the language, the proposed document that would be signed simply says, "The board shall consist of seven citizen members at large." We didn't define. I, I think something was lost when it talks about the citizens. Is it the citizens of the world, citizens of the US? No, no. No, hear me out. Four of them are identified, three are not. It simply says citizens. So you then go on to say four board members must be city residents, but you don't address what the other three could be: world citizens, US citizens, Colorado, El Paso, and Teller citizens. I would just insert some sort of a clarification that captures what your intent, Teller and El Paso. Because that was, I had to wait until you said it, what you were trying to accomplish. Okay. Those are my two comments.
Thank you for that. The intent wasn't necessarily just El Paso or Teller County, but just at large, that anyone that's not a city resident could apply to be on the board. And I guess you could correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm representing the board incorrectly. But what it used to say was Teller County residents. And we wanted to expand that further than Teller County because our actual service area is larger than just Teller County. So they weren't really specifying specific counties. They were just opening, taking out Teller County and opening it up broader.
And if I could, since I was at the meetings and remember the discussion, we talked about that, Rusty, and we, we thought, well, we'll include El Paso County. And then the conversation went, well, we even have some people come from Park County and sometimes from some neighboring, like Douglas County, because that county line is just north of here. And we have a lot of folks that even have mailing addresses in Douglas County that are Woodland Park. So that's where that at-large came from, was to, to acknowledge that we have a support system of the recreation program that's not defined by boundaries, if you will. So that's what the discussion was and why they write. And I'm not advocating one way or another, just what I remember of the discussion as the liaison.
So I was turned to Nina. So if they put Colorado, seven Colorado citizens, four of which are residents of Woodland Park with that.
That would define it so that it at least
Or could you say just adjacent counties?
Adjacent.
Could you just put adjacent counties? Because otherwise you can have people coming from Denver or coming from all other areas.
Yeah, would, would adjacent capture, say, Douglas? I mean, does that, would that capture accurately? Because you, you understand our intent was just, just alignment with the service area. And so whatever language that makes, you know, counsel comfortable and captures our intent, I think we would.
I have no problem with what David just showed.
Yeah, I don't either. Adjacent.
Realistically, are we going to get somebody from Denver that wants to come join our, our Parks and Rec Board? No. Realistically, I mean, yeah, practical. Yeah, so I don't, I don't really care if we go with adjacent or Colorado. Either one works.
Yeah.
You guys. You know, what do you think?
Yeah. I have another comment.
Go ahead.
Under your Article 5, you've got remove official newspaper and replace with city website. I know when we were looking at notification for the city, we discussed that same thing. And although the younger generation is very facile as far as websites go, having a physical posting is still important. And I think, Suzanne, do we do three places? Is that right?
We, we no longer do our postings in the paper.
Not in the paper, but physically post them on some buildings, don't we?
Can I make a point of order really quick? I'd just like to finish what we were working on there. I think we were just trying to decide if it's going to be adjacent or Colorado. Can we just give that to these folks so they can move forward?
I have it down as the decision being adjacent.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that was done.
Cindy, doesn't it talk about being, that's just one change of the other places? Aren't the postings on, in there as well as buildings and the website? We just removed the newspaper and put the website in it. Am I wrong?
That, other buildings is not included in here, but we could certainly incorporate posting at the Park and Recreation Office, City Hall. I don't know who posted at City Hall, Suze, where are the locations?
Police stations that are, libraries.
Currently, for the city council meeting, we only posted on the city website.
There you go.
The DDA, what you're thinking about is the DDA in their bylaws has three buildings. So they post at City Hall, the Police Department, and the Cultural Center is where they post theirs. But counsel, when we passed our resolution each year that we passed, they decided website was sufficient for city council.
But to do, do you guys have like a mailing list? So that if people want to get notified of your regular meetings, that they get an email after signing up?
If someone requests that, we can absolutely do that. We have not had those requests as of today. And I think the reason why we changed to just the website, it was to be consistent with the city council postings as well.
Suzanne, with the city postings, if somebody wants to be notified on email list, they do get it on a regular basis?
Yes, and it's through civic clerk.
Okay.
That the citizens sign up through this, well, it's not called civic clerk. What's the program called, Michael? Civic Plus, thank you. It's through Civic Plus. They sign up for whatever emails they want to get.
And so Park and Rec is also.
They're included in that.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yes.
Okay.
So, counsel, we go back to Article 1. Did we want to decide whether we wanted to leave or remove authority, powers, and, or what was it, power? Purpose and authority?
So if I'm dismayed, that has been the title of Article 1 since its fruition in 1998. So that wasn't something that we changed?
Right.
We'd be happy to make that change if so directed, but I just wanted to let you know it wasn't something that we changed.
Yeah.
Cindy, what do you think the members of the Park and Rec Board would like to do? Add an authority or delete and authority?
Well, that's not something we recommend. That's kind of out, to me, that's outside of the scope. You were only asking for review and approval. Okay, we didn't change that.
So do we make a recommendation to them to delete the words "and" authority, since there is no authority stated?
And I think we should stick to the, what we're supposed to be doing here. Approving, all right?
Or change. We can recommend change. Because I may make a motion to table it until they
So Councilmember Neal, just it, I believe it's, it's good to keep because it explains this, their thought, like this is where they exist. Their authority is to review proposals and plans in the areas of parks, trails, and open space. That, that's, that, it's good because it clearly states their role and it's not outside their role. It's, it's, that's typical. And that, that's their authority as a commissioner or a board. That's my recommendation.
And as someone that's somewhat familiar with the city code, I know that there are sections in the code that, that do empower Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, but I also know that there's, the code scrub is underway. I mean, this may be something that's maybe appropriate to look at, as I'm sure you'll have to with many boards, if there's changes to code to make sure everything's in alignment. But I defer to the person with a lot of degree.
Well, wouldn't you put a reference in there to the municipal code that gives them the authority in that paragraph? Since we're taking the time to meet, to update it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will have to look at the, your boards and commission part of your code and see. I, I would think that that's, that looks like a purpose and authority. Can I make a suggestion? If, if it's, if it's important and the, we have consensus of the council that this needs to be addressed before we can improve these amendments, that we, that we get that. And then if we need to address that, that we give the staff time to research that and advise the council. So what is the council's wishes? Would, would you be comfortable approving what's been recommended to you? And maybe direct the board to consider further amendments? Or would you like to table it and wait for a response from, from counsel on, from the attorney on that?
I was going to make a motion to table it until we got the opinion of the attorney and they had a chance to make the changes that have come forth by the council members.
Can I ask one more question? Is there any issue with anything else with any of the council members?
No, I'd like to. I mean, we can table further discussion. I'd like to, I'd like to approve their amendments though tonight.
Yeah.
I, I guess I have a question before we take that motion. And that is, Nina, have you had the opportunity to review the proposed changes that they've made?
No, I'm not.
So I, I would very much like us to make sure that it passes legal. So if that hasn't been done, is it standard that when your, your bylaws are reviewed, that it goes by legal?
No. In my other cities, but it sounds like not here. Well, it hasn't been in the past. And, and I, are they substantive enough to require a legal review?
Well, we just want to make sure. To me, it's a protocol step. So if, if we can do that protocol step and get what Rusty's looking to have, Councilmember Neal's looking to have looked at, I think that, is it going to make a difference to you if this is approved this week or two weeks from now?
You know, I would, I would say, no, I think the substantial change is probably that secretary position, which is something that we'd want to get in place as soon as possible. But no, I think, I think if it's something that counsel feels more comfortable with a legal review, absolutely. Our goal is to be an efficient and effective board. And so if that's something that counsel feels comfortable with doing the review, let's, let's do that.
Do we have a consensus?
Well, is it possible to go ahead and grant approval for the secretary position? And then go ahead and wait for the legal review to, to approve the rest?
Just keep in mind that the, the secretary position is just someone else to take the minutes and move, Cindy. It's not a paid position. It's not a position of authority. It's simply a cleanup of the bylaws to provide for someone to take that role to simply do the minutes so that Cindy can tend to the business of board, similar to what Michael does for us. So I think that the, this is my opinion. They've spent a great deal of time working through this on some just really housekeeping issues that in my, I think Nina would agree, really don't have legal implications for the city council. I just, I, I don't know, counsel. What is your, your pleasure?
Sounds like consensus is that we want to go and push this down the road a little bit. But if we have the authority to go ahead and at least approve the secretary position for them, I think that would be beneficial to them in the meantime. And then we can go ahead and, and move this issue forward. Make that motion. I'll make a motion to do that, to appoint a secretary and have legal review and bring this back to the table at a later date.
I'll second that based on how you ordered it.
Counsel, any further discussion?
No.
Suzanne? Hold on. I'll join you. Hold on.
I don't know.
Got it.
I don't know what just happened over there, but all the votes disappeared. It just finally showed up. Okay. Can you please, yes, can you please put your vote in again?
We haven't received.
I'll write a memo on it. There we go.
Councilmember Connors, I'm just, there you go. Thank you. Thank you. Motion passed five to one with Councilmember, with Mayor Protem case voting. No, thank you.
And can you state back what you captured?
Yes, so I have to approve the bylaws with the section of having the secretary position enacted for now and then have legal review the rest of the bylaws. The rest of the bylaws, bring it back to council at a later date.
And I just request, um, Cynthia, do you have this red line that you could send me or at least just an order document? That way I could, thank you.
I, I have both. I have a red line and then I have the word doc, um, with. The approved word document from the board. Do you want?
Both would be great, yeah, because I'll, then I'll quickly do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Council, we're on to item four. Council, we have, uh, some items on the agenda that could be lengthy. And out of respect for, um, the folks in the audience, uh, for item. Nine C for a restaurant liquor license. I'd ask if we could move to that item now and take care of that so they can move on with their life and then we can go back to the agenda.
May pretend, may I just make one, um, what I, what I had suggested is could we just, can we finish the consent calendar?
Did I say something?
Well, we want to move them to the first public hearing.
You got it. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you for keeping me in line.
You're welcome.
Consent calendar, count, council, we have items A and B. Uh, the first being approval of the minutes for the June second and June sixteenth regularly scheduled meetings. And the minutes of the June twenty seventh, special city council meeting. And then we also have item B, which is the May twenty twenty-two statement of expenditures. Would you like to take them separately or together?
I have one item on, uh, June twenty seventh, so if we can take that separately, I'm okay to join the other ones.
Just a correction to the minutes. If you wanted to share the correction, I think then we could approve the consent calendar if you don't have them on both.
Okay. So, um, we're on page thirty-five of the packet. It says on June twenty-seventh, we went into executive session number one. Uh, this executive session was posted to the public. As pursuant to CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B. For a conference with special counsel and the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Our second executive session stated that it was. Pursuant to CRS section twenty-four, six oh two, four oh two, four D. Uh, for a conference with the police chief for the purpose of discussing building security. The difference between these two executive sessions is the first one does not state what the purpose is. Having said that, we went into executive session. In that executive session, one of my colleagues challenged me. About recusing myself. We didn't, I didn't know what the executive session was stated to be. Turns out it was to be for the Charis PUD. So we went out of executive session. And then, uh, discussion was had about, uh, recusal. Well, firstly, this is a first that I'd heard of it. I felt blindsided by it. And listened to some discussion and I would ask. That the actual recording, which was recorded, be posted so that the community can hear what the discussion was. It's not on the website at this point. And. So it was very. Impromptu and confrontational. And so. I elected to recuse myself from that executive session. But I'm concerned for two things, that the record note that it was not posted. As to the specifics, specificity of the executive session number one and number two, that. I was asked to make a consideration of something we're not talking about yet. And from my perspective. We're not supposed to talk about QJs. And I have not in any way put my mind to thinking whether I should recuse myself from something that I'm not talking about. So I want the record to reflect that. And then when the time is appropriate. Before the public, if we need to have a discussion about recusals, we'll do it in front of the public.
Thank you. Suzanne, do you have that?
I do have that, but, um. I typically do action minutes and so this is, and we don't take minutes during. An executive session. And so here what it says is councilmember Ott led a discussion. As to whether or not councilmember Zuluwaga should recuse himself from the executive session. And future QJ matters regarding Charis Bible College because of his relationship with Charis. Following council discussion, councilmembers Zuluwaga agreed to recuse himself from this executive session and left the room. So I usually do not put any more detail in the minutes than what I have. But of course I will do whatever council desires.
Well, my request is that it be.
Well, only because the executive session tape, do you mean the public meeting? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, how do we rectify the fact that the public was not noticed of the executive session?
I would let Nina speak to that because this is how we noticed it, so she would have to answer to that.
Yeah, we have it, you know, but we put advice from special counsel related to an upcoming quasi judicial proceeding, um, the. Charis Andrew Womack Ministry attorneys called me that day, um, so they. Seem to have known what it was about and I, I told them, gave them a brief. Very brief summary, um, as what happened in executive session, I'm not permitted by law to speak about that, but. The public, I think what Robert's asking is that the public part of the meeting be, um, be posted and that's not, um. Legally prohibited, but I, I just wanted to clarify for the executive session part. Open meetings law, you know, you guys voted to be in executive session, that's not going to be public, but I think you mean the public meeting portion of it.
I do, and, and also the difference between distinguishing between item three and item four on the agenda. One is general and one is very specific to the, the, uh, chief of police for the purpose of discussing building security. We have no topic on number one that talks about that. And for that reason, it became an issue that was blindsided. It was. I mean, all of that could have happened in a totally different way amongst ourselves.
So we have it listed as a motion to adjourn to the executive session, blah, 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 blah. For a conference with special counsel and the city attorney. For the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Advice from special counsel related to an upcoming quasi judicial proceeding. If I put anything different in the meeting, that's not, in the minutes, it's not accurate. Because this is how we posted the meeting, so.
I get that. I'm just, I'm just bringing to the attention the fact that on that. That in, as we post executive sessions, then is there a requirement that we be specific of what, what it's for? Because when we come out of, generally, when we come out of an executive session, we are asked, is anything said here? That is, that deviated from the purpose of this executive session? And then we have the opportunity to weigh in to say yes or no. Generally, it's no, but there is the occasion where it can be and we've got no train track on this.
I would again defer to the city attorney for that.
Yeah, and if you're asking if, if we should, you know, clarify the minutes that it was for. Oh, it says regarding Charis Bible College, um, you know, if we want to just slightly. Explain that that was the topic, um. I put that in notification and just because it was a procedural. Update. I didn't know the conversation that the council is going to have about, you know, with you, um, councilmembers Zuluwaga. You know, perhaps, yeah, it could have been a few more descriptive. Words in the agenda, but I don't want to say more than that, but we can certainly, it's open that it was about, um, the upcoming. More procedural, we didn't talk about the substance, the procedurals and procedural advice to make sure everyone. Is on track with doing the proper thing for this upcoming PUD amendment, um, brought by Charis Andrew Womack Ministries, so.
So if I may, council, it, it, could you all weigh in on this, please, so we can? So if I may, I think what, um, Councilman Zuluwaga's. Issue is not what we said in the minutes, but how it was posted to the public. Am I correct? So I think we need to, in the future, maybe look at how we. Write what the executive session topic is so that we knew what it was about, but I'm not the lawyer, so I don't know if, how we worded it for the public was.
It could have been a little more descriptive. I don't want to say more than that for. So I, you know, I apologize, but, um, the Charis, you know, I said Charis reached out to me. I don't, again, I don't want to, this reason, so I don't want to. Go further, the nap, but, um, I've been speaking with their attorneys. Um, yes, it could have been a little more descriptive, but I didn't, also didn't want. It, the public to think it was about substance, it's more, it was more about procedure. And I didn't know that other conversation was going to happen, um, beforehand.
So I, I think it's an anomaly. Is it the other conversation that you have issue with, with that wasn't noticed? Because no one knew that conversation was coming.
Correct, and that all could have been.
Well. We didn't know that that conversation was coming when we noticed. I didn't know the conversation was coming.
So after this discussion, I'd be happy if that, uh, public meeting part is posted on the website and on where it says. Recording, that there's not a recording for it, and I know you, you've done it because you sent it to me. So that would satisfy that. And this discussion is enough on this and we'll pick it up when the time's appropriate for.
So is there, besides posting the opening portion of the executive session, is there anything else in the minutes that? Um, the June twenty-seventh minutes that you need changed or council would like corrected?
No, because.
So there's really nothing in the minutes. It's just posting the public meeting.
I would just, just to summarize from my perspective, um, I, I believe that the executive session was noticed properly because. The, we came out of executive session to have the discussion that Mr. Ott led. This council did not know that Mr. Ott, as far as I know, did not know Mr. Ott was going to bring up this conversation. And so to notice something we knew nothing of would be quite difficult. And so I think the notice was made properly and if we can get the, uh, recording of the public portion of that. Posted to the website for Mr. Zuluwaga at, for his request, that would be helpful for the public. Council, did, did I err in any of that that I just said?
Yeah, I think it's, you, you asked us to weigh in. I think if we do post the public. You will hear that there was agreement in Robert's concern that it wasn't specifically clear that it had to do with Charis. And verbally, we added that when we went into the executive session, if I'm remembering correctly, the recording will prove it. But to what, um. Nina has stated or, or, uh, Ms. Williams stated, it was so substantive, I, I was very frustrated. I thought it was going to be a little bit more. Specific and it was procedural in every attempt. When we would start to ask a question, we would kind of shut off, no, this is a procedural. The matter hasn't been presented, so here are the procedural pieces of information you need to know. It's kind of just what you heard, so I do agree with Nina's categorization.
Thank you, Rusty, for helping me with that. Appreciate it.
And then one, um, one last thing that Rob just reminded me about for the record, it'll just be a voice recording, so. The public's used to seeing a video. This will just be a voice recording because we did not have a video.
Correct.
Thank you, council, for that discussion. Anything else in the consent calendar that we want to talk about before we?
Yes, I have one question.
Councilmember Neil?
And, uh, it's for the city manager. Thank you for your email to my questions. The question, the one question I have, all three of those were in the budget.
Trying to think what the three are. I can read. So, so one of them was for the.
RFID.
RFID readers, I, I'd have to look at Kim and Ben for the answer to that. I can't remember how we budgeted that one. Uh, the lift truck.
Lift truck.
Don't believe that was. I think we're using savings for that one. Yes, please correct me if I'm wrong. And then for the prosecutor, yes.
Yes, the prosecutor. When you said the lift truck, you mean?
The boom truck.
The boom truck.
Yes, eighteen grand. Yes, okay.
Are we good?
Yeah, so it's, it, the money's already been spent, right? Okay, it's one of those scenarios where.
Anything else, council? You're welcome. I would for a motion to approve items five A and B on the consent calendar. I'll make a motion to approve five A and five B on the consent calendar. Thank you. Any further discussion, council? Suzanne?
Okay, council, you may vote.
My computer goes to sleep, Suzanne. I think that's the problem. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Council motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, council. So we will now move on. I, I did mention for additions, deletions or corrections, we're going to move nine C. Two nine A. Please, is that all right with the council? All right, when we get to that, we'll do that. Public comment on items not on the agenda. I have one person signed up, Ms. Patricia Stinner.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It appears my concern has been resolved. Do you want me to vote to the speaker too?
If you'd like to share what your concern was, that's up to you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Patricia Stinner, uh, resident of city of Woodland Park eight zero eight six three. It appears that my concern has been resolved and once again, I want to thank all of council. For being most kind and most gracious for tending to this. Anything that's residual of my original concern, I'll handle through email to you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else have comments that, on items that are not on the agenda this evening? Suzanne, do you know if we have anyone on Zoom that would like?
Do not.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. To item seven, unfinished business. There is none. Item eight, ordinances on initial posting, we have none. And on to item nine, and as we just said. We will consider item. Nine C first. Am I on track, Suzanne?
You are.
That is to approve a new hotel retail liquor license for the Mountainara. Cucina Italiana, doing businesses Italian hospitality LLC. Located at seven twenty-seven Gold Hill Place South, Woodland Park. And did I get that right? Did I say it right? All right. Yes. The DBA is Mountainara.
Mountainara Cucina Italiana.
Cucina.
That's, uh, the, the trade name of the company, Italian Hospitality LLC.
Excellent. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me.
Suzanne, would you like to do your presentation?
I would.
And they'll join you at the podium.
Yes, they will. Thank you, Mayor Protem. We are very, very excited to introduce Roberto and Liz. And I am not going to say their last name. I'm going to allow them to say it.
Calcanio.
Calcanio.
Lovely.
So Roberto and Liz are opening, would like to open and are in the process of opening an Italian restaurant in what the council would know as the prior Southern Lily. In Gold Hill Shopping Center. So it's a great use of an existing space. They, the applicant, applicant is Roberto and he currently has a current sales tax license. And he submitted his petition more than, um, thirty days ago and he went around. To all different people in the area and he did the petition for needs and desires. He got thirty signatures from people that are excited and thinking that this business is a great addition to the city. The, um, applicant, the application looks good to the clerk's office. He is eligible, the location's eligible, eligible to be licensed. Roberto and the other partners have all been fingerprinted and had the appropriate background checks, no issues there. Roberto has, um, supplied us with the lease that's documented and expiring in the year two thousand twenty-seven. The application came to our office on May thirty-first. We posted the property on June twentieth. Did a public notice on the website required by law and the character of Roberto and his family are not a non-issue. All fees have been paid and upon interviewing Roberto and his wife. The city clerk's office recommends approval of this liquor license.
Thank you, Suzanne. Council, I'd just like to remind you, this is quasi judicial in nature. Would you like to address the council at all?
I don't know. I mean, mostly if you have like any question for me.
Okay, council.
What I would love is for, if Roberto tells you a little bit about what his plans are, the exciting things he has planned for the business.
Tell us a little bit about you.
So, as you probably understand from, uh, from my thick accent, uh, I'm Italian. I was born in Genova, actually a small town near Genova, northwest of Italy, on the coast. Lived there more than thirty years of my life. I started baking. I was actually started like baking pizza when I was seven years old. I basically, I worked in a restaurant my whole life. I have also a bachelor's degree in architecture. I like food more than I like buildings. So that's why I went like, like, I persevere like this path. I own a restaurant in Italy. I own a restaurant in England, and I moved here to Colorado Springs fi- five years ago. Wasn't very happy, honestly, with like the big city life. So we moved like more than a couple of months ago up here in Florissant, and so far, we definitely love it. It's a way different feeling. I feel way more like home here than I was, to be honest, down the hill. It reminds me my hometown, just without the, the, the sea and the mountains instead. And, I mean, we're planning basically to open a authentic, of course, Italian restaurant. We're gonna bring like dishes very specific from like different region in Italy. For example, one like pesto sauce. You're gonna taste mine. It's gonna be completely different from what like you, you, you are used to. We're gonna have like a huge selection of wine. Thanks hopefully to your approval for the liquor license. And most of them imported directly from Italy. Most of my ingredients that are gonna be from Italy are from domestic companies that they do the same quality that I was like expecting to get it in Italy. Especially now, like the post-COVID, the market in food distribution is very hard, is very difficult. So I, I had like to like adapt and tweak, of course, like something to make it like authentic, like one hundred percent authentic. And tried, I'm trying to source like local ingredients. So it's gonna be everything or like imported from Italy or as local as I can get. Just to give like the freshness that is gonna like distinguish my plates. We're gonna go from like appetizer, primi piatti, which is actually pasta. And main, main, main courses like veal, chicken, of course, fish as well. Dessert, like tiramisu, cannoli. Coffee, of course, Italian coffee, which is, which I'm actually selecting now, like the brand. I'm doing literally a, a lot of like test with different vendors. I don't know. I don't know what else to add.
Target opening date?
Opening date, I would say August nineteen. That is, that is like my date in my mind. It's gonna be a Friday. You, you, we're gonna have like a, I guess like a motorcycle rally in town in the, in, during that weekend. So I choose honestly that date because it gonna, gonna basically like give us like a bigger exposure as well. And I'm gonna be able to accommodate, you know, like a biker still.
Do you take reservations?
No. Yes, we will. I'm not planning to do very much digital, so I would probably go for the pen and paper colin reservation. Maybe we're gonna change it like in the course. For me, like, no, like, like, like my biggest problem every time like I open like a restaurant or I like, or like I start a new venture is like adapting, like to the local market, to the local culture. So I'll try like to read like the mind of like locals, talk with them. I mean, most of you, I mean, you guys met me. I met like a lot of people around town already, so I'm trying, you know, to get like a feeling. I know already you don't like fish, but I'm gonna put it on the menu anyway. Gluten free, yeah. My wife just reminded me. I'm very big, that's because I guess of my five-year permanence in England. I'm very big in vegan, vegetarian, and gluten-free option. I'm gonna use like plant-based ingredient, of course. Alternative to like a regular, for example, bolognese sauce, I'm gonna do another one, vegan one, with like a, a plant-based meat. Vegetarian option, of course, and gluten-free. We're gonna have pasta gluten-free. Mostly pasta, I would say, one dessert, two. So like to give like a big variety. For everyone, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lovely. Look forward to it. You have a beautiful family.
I really can't wait it to open.
Counsel, if you don't have any further questions, I'm gonna open the public hearing. All right, any comment from the folks in the audience or online that would like to speak on this topic? I don't have anyone signed up for this one. I see no one in the audience. Suzanne, nothing online? No, ma'am. All right, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any further discussion or I'll look for a motion?
Move to approve a new hotel restaurant liquor license for the Montana Nada Cucina Italiana DBA Italian Hospitality LLC located at seven twenty seven Gold Hill Place South, Woodland Park.
Or vice versa.
Yeah, for your liquor license.
I'll second. Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? Suzanne?
Thank you, counsel. You may vote.
Italian ice cream, too?
Yep.
Gelati?
Gelato.
Or gelato, sorry.
Just so you know, if someone would have voted no, I would have served them some French food.
Counsel, motions passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Forward to it, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
All right, counsel, we'll go back to. Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking at one other thing. Ten A, new business, TUP Suzanne, would that be inappropriate or smart, ma'am, to move that up?
Okay, we'll just move forward. Nine A, approve ordinance number fourteen twenty four, series twenty twenty two, granting a conditional use permit with a site plan review for the purposes of allowing blah blah. I'm gonna let's, I know Karen's gonna present this and she'll read the whole thing to you. So it's ordinance fourteen twenty four, series twenty twenty two, granting a conditional use permit. Karen, would you like to carry on, please? I don't think they, they wanna hear me read it, and then you read it.
Repetition helps memory, right?
Does it? Obviously not for me.
So yes, in front of you, I come forward with a request to approve an ordinance number fourteen twenty four, series twenty twenty two. This would grant a conditional use permit with a site plan review for the purposes of allowing construction of six two-unit attached single-family dwellings on two point one acres in a portion of the west half of the northwest quarter of section twenty four, township twelve south, range sixty nine west of the sixth principal meridian, also known as part of the Cowards Tracks. It has an address of nine two zero Spruce Haven Drive in the multifamily residential suburban zone. It's a quasi judicial item. So if it pleases the council, I'll start with the staff report or the presentation, please. So this property is located in essentially Central Woodland Park. Here within the vicinity map, we have our distinctive highway twenty four horseshoe, highway sixty seven juts off to the north. This is a little ways up highway sixty seven, and it is a parcel on the north side of Spruce Haven Drive, which is located between highway sixty seven and then Coraline Street. Need a better mouse pad, excuse me. So, and then to, with the location of this property, you have single-family homes to the west and the north. And then immediately to the east is the current location for Fred's towing, so you have a tow yard and some outdoor storage. And then to the south, what appears as a vacant lot in this particular aerial has since been developed with a tractor supply. So this next slide shows the zoning in this particular area. The subject property is this orange piece. This property was rezoned in twenty twenty one to this current zone district of multifamily suburban. The property here along the, the east side adjacent to highway sixty seven is community commercial. The single-family homes are all suburban residential zone district. And then again, the tractor supply is developed in a service commercial zone district. This is a close-up of a better aerial of that particular area. And in this one, you can see the tractor supply building, Spruce Haven Drive, as it comes across the south of the property. This larger piece here is the subject property that is, appears more as a grassy field, and you can better, get a better view of the Fred's towing site here to the east. Next in the report is some photos that were taken of the site. The one in the upper left is you're standing out on Spruce Haven Drive, looking towards the northwest. The one in the upper right-hand corner is looking to the north. And then the bottom two photos are looking more towards the northeast where the, the towing operation currently is located. The subject property does have a little bit of a slope to it, off towards the north and the west, I believe. And then you can see a little bit of some of the aspirins that are currently on site. The site plan that is part of the application shows the, the L-shaped property. There is a central drive that comes in off of Spruce Haven Drive, and it's off of this where you see the six two-unit attached dwellings that are proposed. And there, this comes out to a proposed density of six point six dwelling units per acre based on just this area where those property or where those homes are gonna be developed. This piece off here to the right is identified as lot thirteen and is not proposed for development at this point. There is also a tract A on this property that will help take care of the stormwater and detention for the property. Next slide shows some elevations of the proposed buildings. These were found to be compliant with the city's architectural standards. And then this is slightly out of order from the approval criteria, but the comprehensive plan helps inform how we want to look at ideal or proposed development on this property since it's previously been undeveloped. And there are several goals within the comp plan that support development here, including community, community character and design for a housing objective, to promote stable, safe, diverse neighborhoods, and then sustainable environment to develop underutilized sites. In looking at our comprehensive plan, the future land use map, we said helps inform how we want to see the property develop. The subject property here on this larger map has been flagged for multifamily residential development, which is what this property is consistent with, or this proposal is consistent with. So with that, when we look at the design criteria, one of those is need and mitigation. So is there a need for the project and are there any impacts that need to be mitigated? The request to rezone this property was improved, was approved with the intent of facilitating this type of proposed development. Public health and welfare, the use proposes no threat to the public health or welfare with regard to property value. Proposed development will not substantially affect adjacent property values. And then this project was found to be in harmony, is an appropriate transition between the lower density residential to the north and west, and then the commercial industrial uses to the south and east. Other approval criteria include compliance with city regulations. This proposal has been reviewed by relevant departments and agencies to ensure compliance. And then looking at traffic, the site will be accessed via Spruce Haven Drive by that one central driveway or one central roadway with smaller private driveway servicing each of the units. The traffic statement included or anticipated approximately hundred, one hundred and nine vehicle trips per day. And the parking calculation actually requires only thirty-five parking spaces. And this development is proposed to include a total of fifty-six spaces, twenty-eight of those are in garages. With regard to the environment, the proposed development will not substantially change the site's topography. And as I noted, there's a drainage and utility easement running along the perimeter of the site. And tract A will take care of the full spectrum stormwater detention needs for the property. With regard to utilities, there's a water main in Spruce Haven Drive that will need to be extended up to Coraline Street. And then the developers will be back at a different time seeking their water tap allocations since that's related to the, the pace at which they will need to, or pull those water taps to do this development. Regarding public safety, there were no significant safety hazards. And then with regard to the aesthetics, the, the proposed elevations comply with architectural design criteria. The facade colors, the applicant will talk more about should blend with the surrounding area. And they're also looking at a six-foot opaque fence to screen the property from the adjacent tow yard. Under our site plan review criteria, these are redundant with the, the conditional use criteria. But again, the proposal is consistent with city objectives and policies. It's also compliant with all of our various codes. Traffic has been talked about and found to be within acceptable levels. Drainage is being addressed, and water and wastewater services are being provided to the property. No significant public safety issues, and again, the design and landscaping complies with the criteria. So the planning commission held public hearings on both May twelfth and then a follow-up on May twenty sixth of this year. They found substantial compliance with the conditional use permit and site plan review standards. And they are recommending the city council approve the conditional use permit and associated site plan to allow construction of six two-unit attached single-family residences on the two point one eight acres in the multifamily residential suburban zone at nine two zero Spruce Tray and Drive with eight conditions. These are outlined in that ordinance that's in front of you this evening. Those conditions are, one, all development impact fees must be paid prior to the zoning development permit issuance, including but not limited to tap fees, stormwater capital improvement fees, transportation capital fees, et cetera. These fees shall be calculated concurrent with the zoning development permit review. Two, exterior lighting, if any, shall be downcast and shielded with a temperature of three thousand Kelvin or warmer and shall not exceed twenty-five feet in height. Three, pursuant to municipal code eighteen point three three point one eight zero, at least forty percent of the parcel shall remain as open space. Four, pursuant to municipal code eighteen point three three point one eight zero D, healthy significant healthy existing significant tree shall be preserved to the extent reasonably feasible and may be used to satisfy landscaping and open space requirements. Five, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the property owner shall submit for and receive approval of a final site plan for the permitted use, including landscaping, drainage, architectural elevations, access, et cetera. B, the final plat. C, infrastructure zoning development permit that's pursuant to municipal code section eighteen point three three point one seven zero for the installation of curb and gutter and sidewalks along Spruce Haven Drive, or submit fees in lieu of. And D, zoning development permits and building permits for all new construction, including, and I apologize on this slide, they are out of order from what it appears in the ordinance, but that was so I could squish everything on this one slide. All civil construction drawings, the final drainage report, final grading, sedimentation, and erosion control plan, final site plan, final landscaping plan, final photometric plan, final floor plan and elevations, final utility plans, which includes water, sewer, power, et cetera. And then the Colorado Stormwater Permit slash Stormwater Management Plan. Condition six, prior to conveyance of any dwelling unit, a townhome plat shall be approved by the city and recorded with the Teller County Clerk and Recorder. That townhome plat shall include covenants describing limits on the property and maintenance of all common areas. And then also associated. And then also associated with that town home plat, capital park fees are submitted and payable at the rate established when the application is submitted. And then just noting that the twenty twenty one rate is two thousand one hundred thirty three dollars per unit. These last two conditions were added by the planning commission and that is seven sidewalks shall be installed unless the city engineer determines such installation to be undesirable. In which event fees in lieu shall be required. And then eight, the site plan shall be modified to include a note on lot thirteen reading not currently approved for development. So with that, the final recommendation is that city council move to approve that ordinance number fourteen twenty four series twenty twenty two. I'll repeat all that again if you need me to, or we can move it at that.
Thank you, Karen. Sure, council, do you have any questions?
I do, but I'll go last. Is the is the applicant going to present it all? Yeah.
I was going to call them up. I was just wondering if there were any questions for staff based on the. For staff or do you want to hear from the?
Proceeding, I do want to point out two things I'm going to say again, which you've already stated because I want the citizens to hear this because we, I have heard and I think other council members, there is a desire to maintain the mountain town feeling here and density is really important. In the analysis, it was quite clear that it was stated that the proposed development will create an appropriate transition between the lower density residential to the north and west and the commercial industrial use to the south and east. And couple that with the detailed report that we get. The density that they're allowed is eight units per acre. What they're proposing is it average it what it is six point six acre or units per acre. So they are actually asking to be able to build less than what they're allowed. So they are taking a step in keeping that mountain town feel, even though it's new development. A lot of people hate new development, but they are putting in a low density and I just want to highlight that to the citizens. This is a great thing. And the second thing that I wanted to point out as a.
Sorry, I was going to say after the hearing to say how great the the proposal is, but I'll see what else you're going to say.
Say that the a lot of people complain about parking. I want to just highlight what you just said. Thirty five spaces is what's required there, including fifty six, twenty eight of them garage. I just want to say that twice. So it resonates with the citizens that may be listening to this sometime in the future. My question for the staff is the development or the proposed development of this property would also require the water main in Spruce Haven to be extended two hundred and seventy five feet to Corral Line Street. I could not find in it whether that cost is on the property owner or the city. Who pays for that two hundred and seventy five feet?
Typically, the developer, since it's their proposal, it's causing the need for that extension.
Okay, you said typically, but it's no, what is going to be documented? Will they be?
It's the developers' cost, sorry.
But that is my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel, before we bring the applicant up? Thank you, Karen. Would the applicant like to address the council?
Hang on just a moment while we switch PowerPoints.
Certainly. And then after that, we'll if the council has any questions, any comments, let's use those during deliberation after the public hearing if we could. Please, just for proper process. Thank you, counsel.
It's a right handed mouse. It just looks like it's something wrong.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you all for your time tonight and the city staff and all the work that they put in on this project has been really helpful and I know they're short staffed and that's been a challenge for everybody. So I want to thank them for that. So we thought we'd just give you some quick background on this project to maybe help. So we rezoned the property in May of twenty twenty one, which Karen talked to you about. And you know, a lot of this charity covered, so I don't know how much help I'm going to be on additional information. But at that time, it was approved by city council with the, we reasoned it with the direct intent of doing this specific development. And so at that time, we reviewed city infrastructure, made sure we had appropriate taps in place. And it was in alignment with the comprehensive plan and goals at the time. We also did a lot of outreach to our neighbors, sent out letters and received feedback from them. We generally on any new development do a lot of work to make sure we are getting along well with our neighbors building something that that they'll be happy to live next to. And so we spent a lot of time working with them on that. And then today we're just going over the conditional use permit and the site plan. And so all multifamily right now is required to go through this conditional use process as I'm sure you're, you guys are all well aware. We did do outreach again to the neighbors. We didn't receive a lot of feedback the second round. I think primarily because our our development really didn't change that much from when we had proposed to develop on this property for the rezoning. We did submit like Karen talked about all of our final color schemes and and plans and our comprehensive drainage and stormwater management plan, which should overall improve the drainage in the area. And then worked on with the utilities group to put together an adequate utilities plan, which that was a good question. We will cover the cost of of the utilities for this for this development. And then we have so far reviewed this with the parks board and the planning commission and received their recommendation for approval of this project. And so again, like Karen talked about, this is our our elevations and what we'll be building. Some key stats on the project. They will be three bedroom with one flex bedroom, two and a half bath, two car garage, single family attached homes in the area, which we think will be a good asset and an add to that area both for our neighbors and for the community as a whole. So I appreciate your review. If you can take any questions and hopefully your approval. So thank you.
Thank you, counsel. I just want to bring to your attention that when the Parks and Rec Advisory Board heard his presentation on this, I did leave the meeting before it began and didn't return. So I have not heard anything other than what you've heard tonight. So just wanted that to be on the record. So Robert.
It is, yeah.
All right. When I look at the at your lot sizes, they range from like thirty eight hundred to fifty nine hundred square feet. Is that a top a topography or are you having a design for different size units?
It's just, it's just how we managed to fit them all in there with with the requirements and where everything falls out on the site. You know, if we could make them all perfectly even, that that'd be great, but that it doesn't always work out that way. So, yeah.
So it's it's lent to to meet the necessary specifications for land setbacks.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nikai. So I just have one question. When you reached out to the surrounding neighbors, did they have any significant concerns or what were their comments?
Yeah, we had some initial feedback. One of it was on the color scheme. So we we hadn't initially picked a color scheme on this because we were waiting. We wanted to go over it with our neighbors. That was one of the primary feedbacks that we got is that they wanted some input on that. And so these color schemes are what we have proposed and what we're thinking, but we still want the opportunity as we move forward to work with our neighbors as we finalize that in conjunction with them. And if they have any proposed changes, work with them while doing that because we agreed to do that. And then generally there were some questions about drainage that first round, which we addressed and and talked through and made sure everybody was comfortable with how we would manage the drainage on that site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions to the applicant before I open the public room? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you would just hang out, we may have some more questions for you. Thank you. All right. I will open the public hearing if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the council. Yes, ma'am. If you could come to the podium and speak, thank you. We have a microphone so those online can hear you.
My name is Casey Coronado. I live at four oh nine Burdette Court and we live in that cul-de-sac behind the proposed development. I did have the pleasure of meeting with them and it does seem like, you know, a very beautiful thing, but my concern is the drainage. We as neighbors still haven't really received a complete plan on the drainage if it goes overflowing. Maintenance on the drainage. That does concern me because this year, actually this year and last year, mosquitoes were horrible. I have lived in Woodland Park since nineteen ninety six, have never seen a mosquito in my life till then. That is one of my main concerns because I'll live right there. Drainage, this year, we all know those downpours, we've had like what, seven? Our driveways are washed out. It does incline this way, so it goes in the back. I just don't really see a remedy with that and then building up. I know there's a light ordinance in Woodland Park and having a twenty five foot set. I know those are going to be bigger than the houses that are in that cul-de-sac and that light is going to be shining on us just like tractor supply does because those lights don't turn off. I used to have a beautiful view of all the stars. Now we don't, we get to see a glow from tractor supply and it makes me wonder what's going to happen when those condos go in. Are we going to have that same kind of glow, especially when those lights are going over our houses? I know there's a housing height on single family homes and I see that the condos are kind of going over that. So I would like to see a little more community outreach, I guess, for the neighbors and the community that was here before, because I know I wasn't reached and I'm within that hundred and fifty feet. I know three of my neighbors were not reached and they're in those hundred and fifty feet and they have the same concern about the drainage and bugs. So I would like to see something with that before anything happens because what's that going to do to our property value? You know, if we have setting water right there. I mean, like I said, I've been there since nineteen ninety six. Haven't had that issue, but we see those piles of dirt. Where's that stuff going to go? It's going to go downhill into our area. And like I said, those are my main concerns. I have no issues with affordable housing or anything else, but you know, it was changed from community to commercial zoning to multifamily housing. We did fight that for a reason. So now we have to deal with it and now I'm voicing my concerns. Sound good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this? All right. Suzanne, do we have anyone online?
So mayor pretend, we do not have anyone signed up for comments. We do have a gentleman that has been making comments and I've reached out to him and asked him specifically if he would like to address the council and he has not answered me. So I'm just gonna say no. Okay.
If he comes back, I guess, well, the public hearing will be closed.
Right. And the proper process, just so the people at home can hear me saying this is rather than engaging in the chat during a public hearing is for them to sign up to speak with the online registration.
All right.
Will those will those comments be available for anyone else to see once the Zoom is over or they they lost?
Have to ask Brad. That's a technical crest.
After lost.
I I don't.
Well, also can they be legally considered in a QJ if they've not, if they've not followed the process and signed up and spoke publicly?
That's correct.
So maybe disabled in chat.
Okay.
We're going to, we didn't want to disable it in the middle of this conversation.
Because just to be clear in Zoom, you could, just the public here is trying to censor people. You could raise your hand and then even if they didn't sign up, you would let, you would tell everyone and you'd let them speak. So anyone who's online, they can do that right now. Right. And that's part of the whole process.
I'm so, sir, I think you can hear me. You just had your hand up and now your hand is not up. Do you, would you like to speak or his hand is up now, mayor?
Would you please bring him in, Rob, so we can have his comment?
I have submitted a few comments on the chat. Can you see those?
Sir, we'd prefer that you bring those in and and you present those yourself to the public if you could.
Okay. Okay. My name is Glenn Williams. I live just to the northeast of the property at four oh one Burdette Circle. I have two concerns and I appreciate Casey Coronado being there. She and I have spoken many times. And one thing is that the proposal, this fifty six parking spaces total with twenty eight indoors in garages. That's from a previous proposal of seven buildings that was disapproved. Seven goes into twenty eight and fifty six. Right now we have six buildings. Those numbers aren't correct. Unless there are two different building designs, but I don't see two different building designs. My second question is that fencing next to Fred's towing yard was discussed. But that's only one of the three sides of this property. Fencing to the north wasn't discussed, nor was fencing to the west discussed. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I see the applicant making notes. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Would the applicant like to speak? Thank you.
Appreciate that feedback on the fencing. We just right now plan to really replace the fencing along Fred's towing to improve the overall environment for the entire neighborhood. And so that metal fencing that is out there will be replaced by us. We don't plan to put any fencing anywhere else on the property. A few other things on the drainage plan. It is working on being finalized right now. It'll be reviewed and finalized by the city engineer. At that point, we're happy to send that out to all of our our neighbors and and have any discussion on how we're going to manage the drainage on our site and appropriately deal with that. And then on the parking spaces, Glenn Williams was correct. The appropriate number is forty eight and twenty four indoors spaces, which is still exceeding the requirement for that neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I hope you heard that the applicant did correct the numbers of parking per your observation. So thank you, sir.
Yes, got that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anything else that the public would like to share with the council before I close the public hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any discussion? Turn it over to you.
I'm just curious on the the concern that we have from the public about the drainage. So what are what are we doing to stop that from happening and having standing pools and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so the historical drainage from the site, some of the historical drainage will pass through the site and on to the other side of our property like it has in the past. So we won't make anybody's current drainage issues any worse than they currently are today, but some of the historical drainage from the other side of our property will drain onto theirs as it has always in the past. And then we are in that back corner tract A, which is that upper corner. There will be a drainage, a retention part drainage facility there that will hold that water in that upper corner and then let that out slowly over time from the development of that property. And so what we believe is that the way that it's been designed today, it will improve even with the added buildings, improve the drainage of that property as it versus how it has been handled historically. It's our engineer.
So David, we had a civil engineer for the project. Just wanted to clarify a few items. So again, this is full spectrum retention. The requirements of the full spectrum detention is we're routing, you know, all the impervious areas for the site, that the roof lines and the new pavement and everything else to the the detention pond, which is placed in the lowest corner, which is the northeast corner, which is the predominant historic drainage pattern. When you do a detention pond in Colorado, there are certain rules for it. So the way that detention regime works is the what they call the water quality event, which is near the two year storm, has to be detained and released over a minimum of forty hours. And so that that will be even the the two year event will be released slowly through that rate. Part of Colorado Water Law is the other requirement that, you know, everybody owns the upstream water and you have to get it down there. So another part of that requirement is ninety five percent of the five year event has to be released within seventy two hours. And so there will be no permanent retention and that is always. And so there will be no permanent retention and that is always intended to drain slowly after a storm event.
Is there any, a plan or any way to work with the residents there on the drainage to help make that drainage better on the other side of the property, just to, you know, be a good neighbor with them and, and make it more palatable?
Yeah, we are working a little bit on, you know, the outlet facility with that and I'm still working with Ben and kind of coming up with that. There are methodologies we can use in that outfall so that we can, you know, spread that over a larger area for that release to better mimic historic rather than point release. But that is the low corner of the site and it's, it's going to eventually get to that low corner of the site.
Okay, thank you. We also, I wasn't aware of your guys' concerns on drainage problems and I apologize that our outreach didn't make it to you. So we're happy to talk more about it whenever, whenever you want to. Fred's towing did reach out to us, the property right next to us and told us that they were having some issues with their current drainage. And so what we communicated with them is that we were happy to meet with the city engineer and come up with any plans that may, why we're doing this, help mitigate some of the existing drainage stuff out there, either on their property or however we work that out. And so we're happy to do the same with anybody else that's interested and kind of meet and discuss what potential things could be done.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You know, the other question I have for you is what are you doing to address the light pollution?
Yeah, we are doing all downlights in accordance with the city code on all of the properties as well as there's a certain hue that we're required to keep at, to keep the distraction light pollution from, from the neighbors, from bothering the neighbors. So that should effectively manage any light pollution at the site.
And are your lights on at night, dawn to dusk, or are they on motion sensor?
It, it depends who buys the houses and what they install. So we won't own them. We will, we'll construct them and list them for sale and so however they determine to manage that at their own homes. Yeah, the downlight is on our, our presentation. I don't know how hard it is to pull that back up, but it will be fully solid around the sides. There won't be any openings and shining directly down. So it should cut down on that. And then each individual residential home will, will have to decide when to turn their lights on and turn their lights off.
Counsel, anything else?
No, so when I heard this initially, I was thinking tractor supply and their parking lot lights and they are, they're bright, obviously. And in my mind, I had that, that you were going to have that around. Yeah, okay, but, but, but I, I see now. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. If nothing else, counsel, I'll be looking for a motion.
Can you put it up, Suzanne?
So I'll make it.
Can you switch the screen, please, Rob?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1424, series 2022. Go ahead, okay. Granting a conditional use permit with the site plan review for the purpose of allowing construction of six two-unit attached single-family dwellings on 2.1 acres in a portion of west half of the northwest quarter of section 24, township 12 south, range 69 west of the sixth principal median and also, meridian, thank you, also known as part of the, I have no idea. Tracks with the address of 920 Spruce Haven Drive in the multifamily residential suburban MFS zone.
Next to tractor supply.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? Suzanne?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't hear who did that second. Thank you. Counsel, you may vote.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously. All right. Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to item 9B. Approval of ordinance, ordinance 1425, series 2022 and ordinance adjusting expenditure appropriations to the various funds and Aaron. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I have for you tonight ordinance number 1425, series 2022. An ordinance adjusting expenditure appropriations to the various funds and the amounts and for the purposes as set forth below. This is amending 2022 budget year and amending ordinance number 1407, series 2021. This supplemental appropriation includes six items. We have the 5% COLA for the first phase of the compensation plan that we presented. It has the ERT funding request, police radios. Both of those items are from ARP funds. We have downtown development authority, authority items, public work superintendent position and a grant administration position. Would you guys like me to go into detail on any of these items or would you like me to go through all of them?
Counsel? If anyone has anything they'd like to discuss, if you could bring that forward and we can have a conversation, if not. So indicate.
Well, are we going to vote for them all in one package?
It's one ordinance, yes. It's one ordinance.
Okay.
Any, any discussion?
Discussion about any part of it? I'll have a discussion about the general fund, the 5%, 5%. Good. I guess I get.
Just to be clear, remember, five, there are employees in the water, wastewater and grants fund.
Correct.
Culture and recreation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misread the, the document.
It's okay. You're forgiven. Don't let it happen again. Just kidding. While you're looking a little comic relief.
Okay, so it's going to be the granted administration position, the public works superintendent position, the DDA, the police, ERT funding and the compensation, all in one vote?
Yes.
Okay.
One ordinance.
Well, I will share with the citizens why I'm going to have to vote no for the entire package. Unfortunately, I would vote yes for all but one of them. I ran as a fiscal conservative. And I want to point out, or I have some questions about the study that we're using to request the salary adjustment. We got a summary of the study, but we didn't get the, the details. So in the slides we received, it appears that the data we're using to say that we are underpaid across the board as a generic statement is based on, as I read the slides, Colorado Springs, Denver, Aurora and Lakewood. That's what we're comparing Woodland Park's salaries against those three municipalities. Is that a true statement?
I would look to Amy and Aaron. I don't recall that.
Because that's, those are the only cities listed in the doc that we were provided.
I see an answer approaching.
I see it too.
Council member Neil, I'm going to answer that in one second. I'm going to pull up the original slide that had that info on it.
And while you're finding out the answer to the question, the rationale for the question is I don't think it's an appropriate comparison. Those four municipalities are not like Woodland Park, the tax base and those four and the salaries that those generate versus the tax base of Woodland Park and the size of Woodland Park are not an equal comparison. So if that, those are the four cities and you can see the two slides, second from the bottom, Colorado Springs. And if you go two slides later, I think is where you will see Aurora, Denver and Lakewood. I think it was two slides. Okay, perhaps my deck is different than yours. It's the slide entitled, titled Market Indicators 2022.
So I'll talk about this slide here, council member Neil. We used data from Southern Colorado and Colorado Springs are the areas that we did pull data from. So that can include some of the smaller municipalities in Southern Colorado. The reason we chose those areas is that is our competition. That is where we are drawing our employees from. We do have some employees who live down the hill, but it is really where we are comparing to. It is where we are drawing our employees from and it is truly our competition. So those are the actual studies that we used when looking for all of our data. And then I'm going to have Aaron go over the other slide that talks about Denver, Aurora, Lakewood. But do you have any other questions just on those surveys that we used?
Well, the logic, I think I just heard you say is we're adjusting salaries to try and pull people from high-paying locations. And the way to pull it is to exceed a high-paying location because it has a high-paying, a higher tax base to be able to give those higher salaries. Do I understand the logic correctly?
Could I share one other thing? Yes. I think it's not only where we draw from, it's where we lose to. That's another component of it. Correct. That is where we lose to. We are not trying to have the exact same salaries as Colorado Springs because we don't have that budget. But we are looking at other municipalities who are down the hill, where we are drawing from and where we are losing our employees to. So yet we are not trying to compete with Colorado Springs, no. Those are not the overall numbers that we were looking at. We were looking at averages. And currently we are below that 50th percentile of those averages.
Of what municipalities? Aurora, Denver?
No, these studies do not pull from those. That is other data that Aaron gave for this CP, what was it? CPIU. So no, the studies that we actually used to pull data to find that 50th percentile are Colorado Springs, Southern Colorado. So it encompasses all of Southern Colorado.
But the CPIU on your slide illuminates Colorado Springs. It's actually from Denver, Aurora and Lakewood. That's what's on the slide.
That, that is the, the standard for inflation that we use in the state. We don't get to pick which counties or cities are included in that. That, that's just the state one that we have access to.
Okay.
And then, and we're using that simply for inflation, inflation purposes, not for the study.
Okay. I think the data that you're using might be skewed. I understand your logic and why you're doing it, but the amounts that we're going to be asked to vote on may be skewed to a higher level when we say that they're 16% lower than, you know, what they should be paid. Okay, that's just my, I'm talking to the citizens, how I'm going to, why I'm going to cast a no vote. I think the comparison we're using in the rationale is flawed. The second reason is the across-the-board methodology. The problem we're trying to solve theoretically is retention, keeping the employees here. Studies have shown over and over again, if you've been in other management locations, other management positions, salary alone is not very sticky. Let me explain the term sticky. Salaries do not keep employees at their current place of employment. It's not a very significant factor when you consider all other factors that are more sticky. You can have a performance-based, merit-based system that you vest the bonuses, the incentives over time so that they may be entitled to a certain amount of money, a big pot of money, but they get it in phases over time, which is very sticky because to, to get that bonus, they have to stay there for a couple more years. And if they get another bonus, that is spread out. So there's a compounding staggering of bonus and payment plan. That's an extremely sticky technique that is not reflected in this proposal for eight and across the board. And I guess the, the last one that I'll, I'll cover right now and then turn it over because I think there's going to be other objections. I hope I'm not the only one speaking. There was 6% given at the beginning of the year, 3% one time with the 3% adjustment. So 6% was given at the beginning of the year. We're talking about adding five, so it's an 11% increase from what they were paid last year. That is above the government standard. It's above all kinds of standards to do in one year. So I know you're trying to correct what is perceived as a underpaid staff to, to maintain the staffing levels, but I think we may be overshooting and, and across the board is not the way to do it. You should be targeting it to where you're losing it. Now, David Otten, I did request historical data because we were briefed on a point data, one year's data, 43% turnover. Well, we asked for five years worth of historical turnover. All we could get was four, I mean readily available. If you analyze the four-year trend and I asked that the slide be prepared to show that the citizens, so we should be able to pull it up. We do not have a trend that shows that we have a problem across all pay levels. You have a problem, Dave and I talked about it, at skill level six and seven, I believe, is where the trends show we do have retention problems that we need to address, but.
But you, go ahead here. So the, so the three things I took out of that was that the average for the four years was about 29%. So 4% turnover over the four years, probably standard in a lot of places. To Rusty's point about the pay, pay grade six and seven had the highest turnover in the four years and they had turnover every year. Pay grade six and seven are also the closest to their median salary. So they're being paid appropriately for their positions for the most part, yet they have the highest turnover. Now, they also do have the highest amount of employees, of employees in that, in those, those pay grades as well. So we did see that the grade six was the highest number of separated employees. So I as well believe in, you know, for, if the study, the purpose of the study is to bring people up to, you know, where they should be or where you think they should be in the median, then that's what we should be doing. We shouldn't be pushing other people over. And we should better, in my opinion, we should better use the funds. I was told that's not my purview. My purview is to just vote on allowing the funds. So I'll stick to that, but that was my two cents about it.
Yeah, if we're weighing in on this, I, we had a brief, we, we had a, a we had a briefing from staff on this proposed escalator over the next four, four, six-month periods. And I think there was a, if I can say so, it was a number of us on council who weren't satisfied that that was, should be the conclude, the concluded findings on this. And now we're seeing it come into budgetary, into dollars and cents without any further discussion on it. So from that standpoint, I'm troubled with this. We have four more six-month periods to, to work on this and adjust it. So I am sounding the requests that I'm not satisfied with the, the, the delivery of what we had. It was a one-sided thing. We didn't have really time to get into more and get some of the data that it sounds like my colleagues have asked for and gotten. So I recognize that this is a package deal you presented to us, but I want to sound the comment tone that I'm not satisfied that we really have got to the bottom of this and.
But I want to sound the comment tone that I'm not satisfied that we really have got to the bottom of this and that it's the right metrics. Whether it's our purview or not as council. It is from the standpoint from the dollar factor. So I'm prepared to look at where we are in this and said, I'm okay to approve this. I'm not okay to look to approve the next time you bring this to me that hasn't addressed this completely to all of our satisfaction.
Counsel, if I could, I'd just like to share with, with the public and, and discuss with you all what I perceive the, the plan was presented to us. And right now, tonight, we're considering one piece. And, and then anything in the future would be part of the budget process. Absolutely. David and I had a long conversation and, and we have shared with Michael of some thoughts that we've used in the past here at the city. And, and other places, we used it when I worked at the city of Colorado Springs as well. And, and it incorporates a pay-for-performance program into a delivery system for paying employees. And, and it, and it, it works quite well. It, and it, and it's something that, that the staff would be responsible for developing. And we could certainly, we will understand it and know about it. Our, our role is compensation and the, the dollar amount and know that this evening this ordinance does not do any, anything to anything in the future. And I would suggest that maybe part of our budget process for 2023 would be to work with staff on what the rest of it looks like. And what might be a way to deliver other than COLA. And incorporate some other components into that delivery system, which I think David, that's what we talked about.
We did. And, and I sent the email up to Michael and I was, I was letting know that that was not my place to do that. So I'm going to vote now on just this. And if this is not appropriate and the other councilmembers also don't see it as final and complete, then we don't want to pass a half solution.
We are, the council's, the council's job is not to get involved in operations.
Right.
And, but they, we can give input and, and to the, to the staff. And I think that that is something that we can have some very healthy conversations about through the budget process as we typically do. I, I hope that, and I, I know that it was not intended to slap any hands. It is, it is just the role of the council versus the role of the staff. So I, I, I just don't want the council to feel as if they've had a hand slap. Because I, I know in my heart of hearts, that's not what occurred. So I would look forward to engaging with you all. And the mayor, when she returns through the next few months through our budget process to see what it might look like going forward. This is one component. We're only considering 2022. And then we'll work through how we move forward. Does that makes, does that help? Does that make sense to you all? And I understand Rusty where you're coming from. And that's something else we can still work through.
Well, I, I don't think you, it's been clear that this is a hundred thousand dollars more than we have this year, 500,000. I'm rounding off 500, it grows to $500,000 more than we have next year. And $800,000 more than we will have in two years. So there, if we're policy, and the policy is to try to balance the budget and have the right priorities. And we've said we're fiscal conservatives and one of the highest priorities, and this is what I kept trying to bring up in the work session. Where is debt reduction? Because debt reduction is the thing I keep hearing from citizens, debt reduction.
We gotta focus on this.
We are, absolutely. We're focusing on this ordinance. And we're only focusing on this year.
Is not complying with what.
Next year is another time we haven't, we haven't set policy. We have not made any decisions and we have not appropriated for anything beyond this year. So it doesn't cost the council anything at this point. If I might.
Aaron, would you, maybe I'm missing something. What is the 5% increase that we're looking at here that we're voting on in this?
To general fund this year?
Correct.
It's 115,000.
So the 5%, what we're talking about from general fund is 115, but it's also coming out of two or three other funds, correct?
Correct.
So the total of that is, as Councilmember Neil says.
It's 17,000 out of water utility, 9,000 out of wastewater, 10,500 out of culture and rec, and 1,700 out of grants.
So, great. So in conclusion, Councilmember Neil, I totally support where you're coming from. The concerns, and I think that they are council concerns, they are oversight concerns. But I think this where is, is, is acceptable to myself. It's acceptable to myself at where we are in the process, but the process is not complete. And I think that, so that's.
And that's, and Robert, I, that's exactly what I was, I was lending my, what I was saying. Is we, we haven't made any decisions beyond, and we're not making any decisions beyond this today.
Correct.
All the conversations in the world.
This is what we spoke about was going ahead and, and it's, it's not where it should be.
Correct.
5% is still way less than, well, actually, I guess it's 8% plus Rusty, 3% bonus is even 11%. Pretty significant, pushing towards the original 17% that was asked for, 16% that was recommended by the survey. So, and I hadn't talked with Michael and Aaron and with Kelly as well. And the 5%, I thought we can do that, but before I would do anything else, we gotta fix it. And we gotta fix it for the future, not just a four-year Band-Aid or a year-to-year Band-Aid to move to a performance-based system.
And I would agree with that, Dave.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And know that, I just want to make one more point of, of clarification. The 3% was applied to the salary, to the, the staff that was in the past before this survey was conducted. So that was incorporated into the salaries that went to the consultants that did the study. So it's already in there. And moving forward, we're still deficient according to the survey, 16%.
Yeah, but don't, don't cloud the issue. They got a 3%, they got another 3%, and this is going to be a 5%. It's an 11% increase from what they have. Break, break, different topic. The study, the 16% is baked, 16% underpaid. Factors in, they had already received 3% of that.
And we're still 13, 16% short.
Correct.
Yes. All right. I have a couple of questions. Um, thank you. It was my understanding when we did this study that the 5% wasn't necessarily across the board for everybody. It was to bring some people up, or, or am I incorrect in my?
The plan as presented was COLA across the board.
Okay.
Evenly.
Okay. And then I think everybody else has said going forward, we're, we would like to look at more of a merit system. So that's where we're all at, right? Or discussions on what that looks like.
Yes.
There are many options.
And, and our intention always was to do this first 5% and then come back during the 2023 budget process and give you a much fuller picture. Because it's hard mid-year to do a full budget analysis as Councilmember Kees knows, Mayor Proton, I'm sorry.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
We, we're, we're planning to do a five-year plan. We're planning to give a lot more information during the budget process. That's why we've asked for the initial 5%. Now we'll revisit all this during the budget process.
And.
It's expected.
And the 17% was based on a four-year.
Correct.
Was it two? 18 months. But that's, that's just the goal. That's not necessarily, we may not have the money to do that. There's a whole different, it's just a plan.
Correct. We have to have the funding or we can't.
Okay, thank you.
Michael. So if I may, there's, I've been making quite a few notes here. There's, there's a number of things I've heard, some of which I, I would like to give my, my perspective on and to give some additional context. So the, the, this, the 11% number that I'm hearing is, is not quite accurate. So we did, and I think it was November, December of last year, we did a 3% retroactive COLA to be effective for the year 2021. And I, the number is escaping me now, but when you look at those numbers, I asked that you also keep in mind inflation rate, which for 2021 was
5.9%.
5.9%. So there, there was that, there was 3% for 2022. That was in the 2022 budget. So that was given. This, the 17%, 16, 17% is over above that. Whereas even after that, it's, we're still below 17% market on average. So that, I want to set, set the, the record straight on that one. And I, I heard government standards, and I, I don't know what government standards are, are being referred to here. This is, this seems like a big number and it is, it, it truly is. This is unprecedented in my career in government. The amount of inflation we're seeing is unprecedented in, for the past 40 years. And so again, that's the broader context we're looking at here. And that's why we're doing COLA because everybody is falling further behind. You'll find example of city after city after city, even here in Teller County, you see Teller County itself doing a massive pay increase. I don't have the details on that. You have Woolen Park School District a few blocks away giving 12 and 20% increases to some of their staff. Some of whom we could potentially be competing for those same people. And so, yes, they're big numbers, but these are unprecedented times. So I, I would ask that you keep it in that context. Going to the turnover rates. I, I'm gonna go back to the methodology after the 5% here in a minute because we, we as staff hear you. But you know, even since 2018, every year since 2018, we've had above 20% turnover rate. And I, and I know it varies by pay grade. And I, I think, I think there's ways that we can improve and target future adjustments to individual position classes. Maybe I think that might be more appropriate. So I hear you on that one. But on aggregate, the, these turnover rates are, are pretty large. Is it trending? You, you have kind of a weird trend like this. I, I hear that, that comment certainly. But I, I would argue that even at any, even in 21%, 2020 was very strange for all, all purposes. I think people generally were staying put because they didn't know what was going on. But e- even at 26%, that's, that's pretty rough. We have about 100 FTE. We had less than that in 2019, I believe. Another 30 or so seasonals. That's, you know, that's 26, 30 people that we're losing every year. We talked earlier about how do we build in redundancy and institutional memory? And these numbers make it challenging. So absolutely compensation is one piece of the broader puzzle. Having a place where people want to work, we often hear people don't quit, quit the job, they quit their manager. Absolutely. I think employee development and training is, is a big part of, a complement to this. That's something I've charged our staff with developing as well, along with a merit-based system that we've been talking about and working on. This was the first step to that. We have limited HR capacity to do certain things, multiple things at the same time. We felt this needed to come first because of the rapidly increase, rapidly, rapidly increasing costs. So that, that is absolutely something on our radar. And I wholly agree that merits and having something to work toward is something useful that we need to have. So to, to the broader question, if we don't like the 17% is what I'm hearing from, from across the board from a lot of you. I hear that I talked to multiple of you this week. We, we've been talking as staff. We think there's, there, there's certainly a voice for council on how we do it. And it, it was my comment, Councilmember Ott. I, it certainly was not my intent to tell you to stay in your lane. But it, it, at a certain level, we get down to a certain level of detail. There's, there's always, there's always a caution. Because personnel decisions are squarely under the city manager and our city charter. And that's not to say that I don't want your input, your port, your input is not important because that's absolutely not the case. And in that same email I had mentioned, I, I want to hear ideas and we've talked about those ideas. And I think there's a lot of validity to them. I think we should use some of them going forward, certainly. So my apologies if that came off wrong. That certainly was not my intent. Terms of other things. The, talking about how spending 115,500, something 1800, something thousand more than we have. I, I want to brought, bring additional context in that. We, that's assuming revenues grow as well. It's not, we're going to put, we're going to create 115, 500, something 1847,000 deficit because of this. We wouldn't do that. Now, when, when we showed the, the initial presentation a few weeks ago, it did show, I think, an $87,000 deficit. That, that is true. Again, I've said it many times, I'll, I'll happily continue to say we don't deficit spend. We will, it's wholly irresponsible of us. We would never propose that to you. We, I don't think any of us have a crystal ball in terms of the economy right now. There are, there are increasing whispers of recession. As to the scale of that recession, I haven't seen much consensus yet. But if, if something does happen and our revenues start going negative on a consistent basis, we do adjust. Unfortunately, that's not something we've had to do since I've been here. But that's absolutely something we would adjust. We're talking about the 5% tonight as part of the budget process. We're, we're certainly, I hear council loud and clear. They cross the board 17%. We, we need to do better and be more precise on that. And we, we will certainly do that. And I would welcome those conversations with the council, especially as part of the budget process. But again, as a reminder, we appropriate one year at a time. So we would talk about 2023. If, if that's great, we'll do that. If 2024 tanks, we'll have a wholly different conversation. And that's going back to the comments, talking about priorities earlier. You know, we lost my turn of thought, but we, we, we do adjust on the fly. And we, we are doing it our first ever five-year long-term financial outlook. And we, we are trying to plan better than we ever have before. So we're, we'll have a better idea of seeing what's coming when we have that all put together.
Right. I, I, and I, I'm not against, you know, getting folks up to market value. It's what they're worth. They work hard. So I have no issue with that. The reason I have an issue with a 17% or any, really, I don't like that it's a 5% across the board either. I prefer it to be adjusted, you know, appropriately. It's because when you're talking about large, you know, nearly 20% increases in pay and then doing it across the board. Number one, it costs more money. And number two, now you're creating a deficit, even a larger deficit of disparity in positions of pay across the grades. So, and I like to avoid that. I'd like to just get everybody up to where they're, where they should be. And then look at that system to pay for, for performance to get them merit increases. Instead of, you know, maybe this year you don't get a raise at all, you know? And then we reward good performance. So well, it's not the plan is right now. So.
We're voting on a plan given to us.
Thank you.
The board.
And I.
I'll wait until I'm recognized.
Well, that's okay, Rusty. I just didn't want argument and, and this exchange to go on without the council. I, I hear, I think we all hear what you're saying. Rusty, I think we understand where you're coming from. Absolutely. And I think Michael has addressed and commented on the concerns that were voiced. Would you agree with that? Rusty. Please. Please.
I ran, not to be liked, I, I ran to do a job for the citizens. Sometimes doing the right job for the citizens, you're not going to be liked by some members. In this particular case, I am not very popular with the city staff by my position on this. But I'm using 66 years' worth of experience to tell you, if you're trying to solve a problem of retention. This is not the, the best use of the fund. It is a small variable that could affect it a little bit. But it is not the best way to use the funds. And we have time to change it and come up with a better way to solve the problem. David has spoken to it. Catherine has spoken to it. Kelly, you've spoken to it. Robert's spoken to it. You target the salary increases based on performance or based on where you have. Or based on where you have big deficits in what the salary is versus what the, the average is. Where you have people that are already at the average or above the average, getting another bump in pay is wasting. Funds, taxpayers' money, it's not going to contribute to the stickiness, to the retention problem we're trying to solve. So I'm not trying to be liked at this point in time, I'm trying to be. I'm trying to do the job you asked me to do, which is analyze this data, analyze the, the trend. At a micro level and come back and offer a different. Option than what is being proposed, but it doesn't sound like going back and thinking through another option. It's this one, wait till next year, we'll worry about it in the future. Thank you for my commentary.
Thank you, Rusty. Counsel, any other comments? I do have one person signed up to, uh, visit with us. Can I open the public hearing and listen to that comment and any others, and then we can have further deliberation if we need to? Thank you. Robert, is that already with you? Thank you. Um, I'm going to open the public comments on this ordinance, and I have Carl. Kiermeier, Kymer, did I say that even close? Kiermeier, thank you. Sorry you've waited so long, we can be good, voice this up here.
Uh, good evening, council members and fellow citizens. Uh, Carl Kiermeier, twelve eighty, Shea Crest Circle, here in Woodland Park. Um, I do have. An opinion and, uh, about not, not so much that the, not that the employees deserve. Uh, a pay raise, they are hardworking, and I agree that they should be compensated for their hard work. And obviously, you guys understand that because of your adopted twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, compared to your adopted twenty-two budget, shows that some members of your staff have gotten a ninety percent increase in pay. And compensation package. So I understand that you understand that they should get paid. And I understand hard-working employees do deserve to get paid. And to keep up with inflation, they should be entitled to work hard, get paid, and live their lives. That's what I do. Several members of our community do. So, uh, besides that, I also wanted to bring up, based on your twenty twenty-one budget. Before the water utility, this is what really got me, uh. Fired up to get down here was, uh, your twenty twenty-one budget, your total revenues was two million, two hundred thousand. But your expenditures was three million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand. That's quite a deficit for you guys to be tapping into the water fund, the water utility fund. Matter of fact, it must have been important because you raised my fees four percent this year. So obviously, there's something that needed to be done with the water fund, and now you guys are just. Going to utilize that like social security and pay everybody else off with it. So. That got me fired up. The water fund is for the water fund.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So I pay my bills, I pay them on time. And the water fund was obviously well-managed. Until I saw the twenty twenty. Till I saw the twenty twenty-one budget, and then this year I got an increase of, what, four percent, four point one? Is that what it was? On my utilities for water? So obviously, something needed to be done, and you guys did it. But tapping into it to pay employees because. Uh, the water fund is the water fund, just leave it alone. But a ninety percent increase for s- certain members of our staff, I think is, is excessive. That one should have been planned out a little bit, instead of worrying about five percent. You give ninety percent. So. That, uh, needs to be rethought here, and you guys are, and most of y'all ran as fiscal conservatives. Right? So be the fiscal conservatives that you promised us that you would be. Be more accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would invite you, if you would, to, um, visit with our utilities director and our staff. To ask those questions and help them and show you exactly how things worked. I can guarantee you, no one received a ninety percent increase, and they can show you in the bu- the budget can be quite a daunting document. I prepared it for seventeen years for this organization. I understand. I would just ask if you'd like to have your questions addressed, the staff would be happy to help you with that, but I do thank you for your comments.
Does it, is that not true?
Sir, what, what is not true?
What you, what you posted on your website.
It is, the document is what was passed, yes.
The adopted budget.
Yes, sir.
For twenty twenty-one.
Yes, sir.
The adopted budget for twenty twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
Certain members of the staff have gotten a ninety percent compensation increase.
Thank you. I, I know that the staff can help you understand that, because that's not what happened. And I'm not, I don't want to argue with you, I just wanted to offer the assistance of the staff. Thank you for coming, and we appreciate your comments.
If, if I'm a mayor pro tem.
Yes, please.
If, if we could have maybe Aaron and our kit chat with you, um, I'd like to understand that better, where, where you got that number and try and understand it better. I don't recall giving anybody a ninety percent raise, but I'm, I'm curious where you're, I'd like to understand that better, if, if we could.
Yeah. And if you would share that with me too, when you finish, I'd be curious. Thank you, sir.
So.
And, and.
So, so Kip can help you with water, Aaron can help you with everything else.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? On this issue, all right. Suzanne, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any further deliberation, please?
A question for Aaron.
Robert.
So Aaron, what's the implication to this evening? If, um, we consider, uh, Councilmember Neil's cons- concerns here. And this go through another iteration with council, uh, so that we are more. On board with staff with regards, the whole discussion was started with, uh. Pay increases comparable to, uh, local areas, et cetera, what would be the implication to, uh, your process and to this budget? If that was pushed out.
Rob, can you? Okay, um, so of the six items. The ERT funding request, I believe, is time-sensitive, the police radios. I believe that the chief is looking for those relatively soon. Um, the, and the DDA items, of course, those were, were hoping that, I think they were hoping to put those in as quickly as possible. And then the, the other positions, I mean, if, if you're suggesting taking the item off or splitting it up, I, I don't know, is that your question?
Yeah, what's the implication to this process? And some of these, I realize, are American Rescue dollars, so it's not, it's not relevant to our budget. As far as the police department goes, from what I understand. And my, yeah, so that's my question, what's the impact to this if you break this out? And come back to us with, um, well, see, your numbers, that's where I struggle with this. I'm, oh, that's where I'm partially inclined to go ahead and let this move forward, but we aren't there yet. Uh, as opposed to bogging everything down, but what would be the consequence if we said, hey, pause on item number one? Pause on possibly, um, five and six. Um, to let discussions add, I'm not, I don't know where you are on five and six, and I'm not particularly opposed to moving forward with that, but.
Five is a position we have.
Yeah, number five was an error that we had when we prepared the budget, and we were just putting it back in where it belonged.
Okay, so it would stay.
Yeah, that one would be a concern.
It doesn't increase the budget, it's already, it just, well, it didn't get put in the budget correctly, so.
Correct, yeah, so the allocation was there, just not, not the salary.
Okay, and the grant administrator is a new position, correct?
It is, and we, we need the grant administrative position, we, we want to go out there and get some grants.
Yes, they do need that for sure.
And, and so if, if I may, Mayor Pro Tem, just one more time to be very clear.
Please, Mike.
The, uh, the discomfort with the, across the board in, in the future years. Um, we're, we're happy to go back to the drawing board on that, there, there is time to do that. I, I hear. All of it, uh, and again, that's, that's what was shared in my email earlier today. Um, I, we, we can do better on that, is, is what I'm hearing, and I, I don't disagree. So you, you have our commitment to do that, to revisit it and figure out how to do it better. Um, and there's, there's a lot of ideas and wisdom on this council, on how, how it's been done elsewhere. And I'm, I'll have a conversation with anyone who's interested on how best we can do that for whatever it's worth.
Thank you, Michael.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen twenty-five, series twenty twenty-two, in order suggesting expenditure appropriations to the various funds.
Thank you.
Point of. Order, I have a question.
We can have further discussion, we have a motion on the floor, we can have a further discussion after a second.
Isn't there a way to modify motion, or a way to ask that the motion?
Can, first you have to acknowledge this motion.
Or no.
Or not.
So I need a second, then we can ask.
Or you can, you don't have to.
Could be no second. Okay.
I'll second it. Okay, discussion, Rust.
Is it possible to modify the motion such that we approve ordinance number fourteen twenty-five, series twenty twenty-two? With the, uh, removal of the general fund line on exhibit A. So what you're doing is.
What page is exhibit A?
What page? Uh, it's page one oh six, exhibit A is what we're approving the expenditures for, which has everything. The general fund has the, basically, the five percent piece of it, so we can go back and, and noodle that around a little bit. Based on the comments you've received, but we're not going to slow up the grants fund, the downtown, the culture rep, the water, and the wastewater utility.
It's up to the motion maker. First, what we need to do is withdraw, if you would like to.
I will withdraw my motion and make a motion.
I will.
The second.
I'll second that.
No, but she was the second, does she have to withdraw her second? Just the motion maker.
Just the motion maker.
Thank you. Um, I have a question of staff.
Michael, can, Michael, can I chat there?
Please.
If you have modified that, I will, uh, respectfully ask that you remove the water and wastewater funds, because you cannot give staff, some staff a five percent.
That's.
And others not. Okay, um, the message that sends is terrible.
Sure is.
Rock that, Kip. So I would make that, um.
General fund.
If, if I may, um, I would suggest altering the, the language to omit the five percent rather than go by fund.
Correct, because it's, it's in every fund, essentially.
Okay, so let me, with the help of everybody here, did I get it ordered correctly? I'd like to make, unless Frank, you want to go ahead and have the lead on it. Make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen twenty-five, series twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. An ordinance suggesting expenditure appropriations to the various funds. With the modification that all paragraphs.
That just remove the five percent.
Just discuss the five percent across the board be removed. Was that worded adequately, Suzanne?
It is. Is there a second?
Yeah, second though.
Okay, now that.
Further discussion?
Yeah, so, uh. I was just gonna ask, uh, and I wanted to ask this question, I tried to stop us before we made a motion here.
Oh, sorry.
Um, that, how long, if we, you know, we're gonna remove this, uh, this pay raise issue. How long will it take us to get this back on the table so that we can move forward and take care of the employees? And, and that's, because if it's, if we can get this done fairly quickly, then, then, again, I'd like to pass it as it's, so.
It requires.
Sure that we're.
It requires a new ordinance and two readings.
A new ordinance and two readings.
Yes, so it won't be till, towards the end of, mid to late August.
So a month, month and a half, so. Okay.
Any further discussion, counsel? I just would like to make a comment that I, I'm sorry, I can't support this. Um, I, I, uh, I've been in their shoes, and, um. I just can't support this. I think it sends a terrible message and, uh, can't do it.
Well, the message it's saying is, we want to pay for.
According to you.
Performance.
According to you.
Okay, but you, you've said it sends a terrible message.
In my opinion, it sends a terrible message to the staff of this organization.
Opinion, what we're discussing is a better technique, so that we send a message that high performance is rewarded. Average performance will also be rewarded, poor performance is not rewarded. You have a chance to include, prove your performance, and believe it or not, there's management theories that the bottom performers, you sometimes want to let go.
Um, I'm going to ask the appropriate staff to share with us what it takes and the process of putting together pay for performance, the program.
I can jump in.
Go ahead, Kip.
I just wanted to provide some history, uh, for council. Um, our staff would love pay for performance. Fact of the matter is, the council never approves any money for it, it's always costly, that's just a fact, that's why we're behind. Okay, um, if you wanted to tack on seven percent in the average, that it gets out there is five percent, it's still pay, pay for performance, great. However you want to phrase it, but my history has shown, and I'm sorry, I'm passionate about it, because it is hard right now. I have guys fighting for the on-call just to get gas to get here, because they can't live here. So, yes, we received three percent at the end of the year, last year in twenty-one. You know, the, the staff had to wait a whole year for that three percent, the cost of living was going up more than that. Then we got three percent generally, first, it was awesome.
Okay, point of order, this is out of order, they have a staff member, when we're in state, when we are at council.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Councilmember Neil and other council members, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, to develop this plan will take time, because what we have to do. And Michael, please, if I'm speaking out of term, please feel free to step in. Um, I am a department of one, and so this does fall under me. Um, it will take time, because what I'll do, and I, when I say, I, I also mean, I'll be meeting with every director, crew chiefs. Um, anyone in a supervisory position, um, I'll need to look at every single position. And figure out what training they would need to move up in a merit system. It won't be solely based on performance reviews, because performance reviews themselves are subjective. Um, so I can't say we always get an accurate view of an employee through performance evaluation, especially if money is tied to it. So it will be a step program, but it would be more geared toward each position. And what's needed to help that employee, um, do their job better, become, um, invested in the city. Because that is part of an employee retention program, is having employees who are invested in the city. And that in turn benefits all of our citizens, so it's kind of a comprehensive plan. So it will take, um, I'm not going to give an exact estimate, but quite a bit of time to develop that program. We have started looking at it, we have started thinking about it, I have started talking to directors about what potential trainings are. That employees could, um, attend to improve their skills. I don't know, Michael, if you want to add to that.
No, I, I, I appreciate that, Amy, that's, that's exactly right. Um, you know, and, and merit is an important piece of it. I think the job, the job classification, the career progressions, I, I like it because there is a larger degree of objectivity to it. You acquire a new skill, you get certain experience, above the ladder, it's like a step system in the military, a lot of public safety.
You acquire a new skill, you get certain experience above the ladder. It's like a step system in the military, a lot of public safety organizations. Except it's not guaranteed. It's based on that employee going out, performing and meeting a certain criteria. And so ergo, they are more valued to the to the organization. We still have evaluations that that doesn't go away. They're they're still adjudicated on performance in that way. So it's this, Aaron and I have talked about he did that in his former organization. My former organization did career progression ladders. We did merit as well. We, in my experience, it it did not work all that well in that organization. There's ways to do it better, I I'm sure, but we were starting down this road. We're like, we look for other methodologies. I've mentioned working on employee training, employee development as well. And so that that all goes into the package too. It's not just, not just the compensation, but it's making this culture, this organization more desirable to be in, to be more competitive because people can do more things and they can grow their field of experience, which is something else that people like based on literature that I have seen. And kind of tangential to this question, we had one slide in the original presentation that showed how far behind midpoint each pay grade was. And the pay grade that was closest to the midpoint was still eight percent away. And so in ensuring that point, looking at the five percent, the five percent still doesn't get anybody up to the midpoint. There there will be a few isolated cases and you know, we'll we'll deal with those, but it's not going to move everybody suddenly or a handful of people past that midpoint in in any pay grade. And so for that increment over and above midpoint, that's something that would happen in twenty twenty-three and beyond anyway, irrespective of this five percent right now.
Thank you, Steph, Amy. And as we spoke about in our work session, this compensation plan is the basis so that we can get people up to where they need to be. And then we can build those merit-based increases, the performance-based. All of that, this is just our base to get us there, to get people up. Sorry, Councilmember Neil. Thank you. Yes, rest. I mean, council.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, today, in the past, when you were the finance director, I was under the impression you had implemented a performance-based system that has fallen to the wayside.
We did. And it's, as Amy said, it's it, we used it. It worked well. But there was bias, of course. And I've had to evaluate people on that merit system in their evaluations. And I have to admit that I did bias some of them because it's just a natural reaction to to that. So it's it's some, it was trending then. I brought it with me from the city of Colorado Springs because we implemented one there. And we used it here. We used it for a while. Why it went away, I don't know. And we did not give colas at that time. We use the performance system. We were often tardy in awarding raises because it was quite complex to each field supervisor, et cetera, to evaluate their employees. It goes to the department head, it goes to the manager, and then you allocate the pool of funds that the council had approved accordingly. And and each each department was assigned a percentage. It it was easily manipulated, but it, we used it. It worked. We used it as a merit system. It's been nine or ten years ago.
Right.
So things have changed since I was in that seat, Aaron. Okay, please.
Based on that information and David's concern about how long this process. Believe it or not, I do listen to your input, Kip. I do. Knowing that there was a program that could be dusted off. How long do you think it would take you to dust that off? Work with your new city manager because it was under a different city manager, get his guidance. I I just want a timeline of when the money could start flowing into the hands that I I hope deserve it the most.
Before you answer that, I just want to make one observation for you. The organization has changed significantly and it all starts with a job description. And from a doc job description, you build an evaluation form.
Good point.
And so the jobs have changed significantly. So using what was there probably would be more cumbersome than just.
Okay. So back to that.
It was something that was more today.
And Councilmember Neil, I am happy to look at the old system. Without knowing it, I can't give a timeline. I hate to say that. But without knowing what the former system was, as soon as I look at it, I can absolutely give you a timeline. But without knowing what that former system was, I just hesitate to give you a timeline that I might not be able to meet.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, ma'am.
So I was present during the former system.
You were.
Yes.
So were you, Kip.
So let me, I'm just speak about what the former system was because it's not in writing.
No, it's not.
There's no program or anything. It was evaluations were done. The city manager would rank the employees from the best employee, number one employee in the city, all the way down to number ninety-nine in the city. He would take that, affix a formula to it, and that's how the raises were given. There was no program. There's nothing in writing. It was just the way it was done. So there's nothing for Amy to dust off and even look at.
Thanks, Suzanne. All right. Yes, Mr. Zuluwaka.
I have a question about this vote. So we have changed the motion. Looks like it's going to take six weeks at a minimum for this to get discussed. My question is, if we vote this motion down, does it come back at the next council meeting in its original format? Or does it, what happens to?
Can we not make another motion to approve?
Or we could. Question. My first question is that. So what is, what happens if this gets voted down?
We start over.
Be amended. We have a motion on the floor right now. Given the discussion that we've had since then, recognize the time factor of implementing this and the stress factor to employees. The the person that made the motion can withdraw that motion. We can reintroduce. We could. To, we could, but I, we can get there. I wanted to ask the first question is, if this motion gets voted down. Does it come back next week?
No, if it if it gets voted down, it goes away. It's done.
Then we have to reintroduce this for two more times again as well.
You'd have to bring something new, something different. But no, but he's asking about this motion right now.
Right.
If it votes.
I'm talking about the amended emotion.
Correct. If it dies, then a council member can make a motion to approve this ordinance as it's written tonight.
So we can do two motions tonight if.
If this motion that's on the floor fails, we can make another motion to approve the ordinance as it sits or amend it another time.
Sure.
May Protem.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's up, it's up to you, but if you wanted, the chief is willing to speak.
I would love to.
Would like to acknowledge him.
Thank you, Chief. Come on up.
Oh, the new guy gets the mark. First of all, I appreciate the time. Of course, I respect each and every one of you, the positions that you hold in the city and the reasons why you sit in the chairs. Having only been here nearly four months, I will tell you that I have dealt with this issue for the past three years as a chief since nineteen ninety-nine as a member of the staff at the rank of lieutenant or higher. There is no perfect system. We used a merit-based system for decades. It is nothing more than a favoritism show if it is not properly administered. Oftentimes, budgetary constraints meant that we would only have anywhere between two and four percent of the budget-based salary by which to put forward merit-based raises. When you're dealing with a nine percent inflation rate, it doesn't take a little bit of simple math to realize we will chase our tail forever if we don't do something to get ahead of the curve. Now, what does that look like? I don't know. I think the overwhelming majority of us understand that your desire is to more tailor the system to reward what we used to refer to as the Eagles. Find your high producers and reward them accordingly. I personally have no problem with that. I actually like that system because if it's properly managed, it's a very effective tool. If it's improperly managed, it's a mess. It sounds like we've experienced that here. One thing I can tell you is is that I, from my own department, will tell you that it will be properly managed if and when we go to a system like that. Whether or not this particular night is the time to discuss that is the question. And what I am suggesting is, with all due respect to each and every one of you, given the state of particularly my department, and this is going to sound bad, but hear my message, not my words, I really can't take any more roadblocks at this point. I've got to do what I can.
Say that again.
I'm sorry, I I can't afford any more perceived roadblocks by the staff or by the employees. I have got to do what I have got to do to keep this ship moving in the right direction. I get that there's some heartache with the five percent across the board issue, and and I think we hear you. I think we all do. But this motion also carries ramifications for equipment and whatnot that, quite honestly, I need. The radio I have on my side is no longer supported by Motorola. It's being fixed out of a parts bin because these radios were not upgraded when they should have been. So I say all that to say this. I've experienced that system. I know it well. If the city manager and the staff members and I get together, we decide we want to pursue that route. I'm willing to jump two feet into it the way we did and the one that I'm used to doing. I just don't know that right now we need to make any radical changes to the program. Push this forward. Let us regroup, bring you the product you expect from us and move forward.
I think that's the motion on the floor right now, Chief, is to to drop the five percent and go ahead and approve your equipment and the other, the other items.
Well, again, so with with no disrespect, dropping the five percent from the proposal only creates an issue for me because it's going to have a ripple effect down the line. When the employees start to talk, and they will, it's going to be a mess.
Point of order, please. We could have every department head come in and and say the same thing about it. I got your point. It was my motion on the table. Let me try something.
Thank you, Chief. Don't leave anybody.
Yeah, don't leave.
Yes, please.
Michael, I've tried to get a message to you in everything I've been saying. I hope you've heard the message of some other council members, okay? But I've also listened to the testimony and the timelines. I would like to withdraw my current motion and make a different motion. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty-five. Series twenty twenty-two and ordinance adjusting expenditure appropriations to the various funds as written.
Did you second David?
So let's.
Any further discussion, counsel? Thank you, Suzanne.
Counsel, you may vote.
Can I give you a verbal vote, Suzanne? Because it's not coming.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm a yay. Thank you.
I don't have a vote for Councilmember Connors.
Go ahead and just give her a verbal.
And let me put that in here. Thank you, council. Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you, council. It was a great discussion. I appreciate everyone's comments. And we'll work on that diligently together with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. All right, we're in the world, are we? We need a break.
Please take a break.
We'll break for until nine fifty-five.
Yeah.
Not really. But I wanted to. All right, are we back? All right. Karen, are we good? All right, yes ma'am. All right, council, we are on item nine D, approve ordinance fourteen twenty-six, series twenty twenty-two, and ordinance of the city of Woodland Park, Colorado imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission of acceptance process. You had, you had spoke to the lady in the audience. Oh, forgive me. We're starting over. Ladies and gentlemen, we have some folks that have been very patient and kind to wait in the audience and we would like to give them the grace as we did before for item ten A, council, to go ahead and hear this so that they can move on and not listen to us anymore.
Let's do that.
All right, it's approve a rock gym and jewelry show T U P, a request from Kim Packham, the applicant, and the U Pass Saddle Club Incorporated, the property owner, for an onsite vendor camping permit, August fifteenth through the twenty-second of twenty-two, for the Woodland Park Rock Gym and Jewelry Show special event, down at one nine two five zero, East Highway twenty-four in the Service Commercial Zone District. That's down on the old Lagoon property. Uh, saddle club property down, used to be the saddle club property, still is a saddle club property, I suppose. Okay, it's getting late. Karen.
Thank you. No PowerPoint, no slides, just straightforward facts here. This is the twelfth time a city council has seen this type of a request in association with this event, per our city ordinance, camping in designated areas, this is something the council would review on an annual basis if this, as this request comes through. And so, as announced, these folks are asking to be able to do overnight camping in conjunction with the Rock Gym and Jewelry Show. Uh, this is camping for approximately forty-five vendors. Uh, the dates for this would be August fifteenth through August twenty-second, or seven nights. Uh, the overnight camping is limited to show vendors and event volunteers only, and campsites are proposed to be located within the designated vendor spaces. Uh, this provides uh security for the vendor and their merchandise and also vendor convenience. Uh, so, similar to the past years when you all have seen this, you have in front of you the staff recommendation, uh, oh, which includes, was it ten conditions here to approve the ability to do camping uh at the, the U Pass Saddle Club grounds, uh, in conjunction with this special event. Condition one is camping occurs only between nine AM, August fifteenth through nine PM, August twenty-second. Two, camping shall be for event volunteers and vendors only with no more than forty-five camping units permitted onsite at any given time. Three, camping units shall include tents, camp trailers, recreational vehicles, and pickup campers. Four, camping units shall not be connected to city water or sewer and shall be self-contained. Five, on and off-site trash, garbage, or debris shall be cleaned up during and upon cessation of camping. On-site cleanup shall be coordinated with and enforced by the property owner and event coordinator. Six, the event coordinator shall be responsive to complaints if any received. Seven, all lighting for the camping and event areas, if any, shall be downcast, fully shielded, and turned off by nine PM each night. Eight, all generators, if any, shall be turned off by nine PM. Nine, the event coordinator and all campers shall be at all times subject to municipal code section nine point four one noise. And ten, at no time shall campers, vendors, event volunteers, or guests slash participants obstruct access to the city of Woodland Park Lift Station.
Thank you, Karen. Council, I'll remind you, this is quasi-judicial. Do you have any questions of Karen before we?
I think my questions were answered, mostly the trash. Trash being cleaned up and I'm happy.
I love rocks.
All right, then I will open the public hearing if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this issue. Seeing nothing, Suzanne, do we have anyone online?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. I will close the public hearing. And council, any further discussion or I will be looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To?
Approve a rock and gin jewelry show.
And do I have a second? Thank you. Any further discussion, council?
Only one question, only one question about the trash. For bears, is there, is there any uh night issue with the trash? Does it get? Of the big dumpster, okay, it can't get in. Thanks.
And just a question, how many years have we done this?
Thank you, I believe, I believe the clerk has sent a vote request to you all. Thank you, council, this motion has passed unanimously. My apologies for not taking this sooner and have a lovely evening and a great show. You're welcome. All right, council, back to Frank. Nine D, as in dog, approve ordinance fourteen twenty-six, series twenty twenty-two, and ordinance of the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission acceptance, processing or approval of applications for a short-term rental license. Mr. Connors. And Mr. Ott.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. Did you have a question you wanted to ask?
Yeah, so before we move forward here, uh, and I know Frank prepared a presentation, thanks for getting that sent out ahead of time so we could take that as well.
No worries.
Some of the concerns is, as I spoke to other council members about the, the moratorium, was that, uh, was, it was timing, like what, why is this so important for us to say yes to this? And so we asked for, so Catherine, I'm sorry, uh, Councilor Nakai and I, uh, sent an email uh to the city staff uh to get some information about that, on percentages, like where are we at, compared to averages for most other cities, big or small, a lot of them are at a, a three percent kind of cap. Uh, and so I kind of wanted to find out where we were at to find out if there was an urgency to shut this down now, and, and, and take this break to, to get some control before we're at, you know, ten percent, which I'm, I'm exaggerating there, ten percent. Or, or should we, you know, go ahead and keep moving forward, based on the number of licenses that have been coming through that, you know, to know that there's either a floodgate of them, because we got one person to process them, or not, so that we're not, you know, we want to make sure that we're making a good decision, um, and that we, we still won't let this go, we will still work to, you know, look at, at regulating these if necessary, or what codes are, need to be uh put in place. So, so far, um, to, to, uh, besides the fact that Frank did bring up that, uh, about the code, you know, it is important to take care of this quickly because of the code. But if we, you know, without knowing the numbers and knowing what the urgency is to shut this down, in case we are already really high, it's difficult for me to say, let's go ahead and do a moratorium just based on this one thing, based on some of the comment I heard from the public last time and talking to some other council members. Doesn't change the fact that we gotta fix our code and we need to do something about this, because we've been dealing with this since August. Have you seen your, your mailer from the city since August twenty-one of last year? And we still don't have any, any solid ordinances, uh, or any real action on it. So, um, so I would, I would prefer to finish getting that information, I spoke with, with Rob about that, and he said it would take a little bit of time to get that, he has some of the numbers already. Um, but I'd like to have that complete set so that, you know, Catherine and I as well can take a look at that and we can pass that around to the other council members. So, I, I might consider uh giving it, or, or ask maybe if Frank would like to push this one counts, one session forward in two weeks, after we've had time to take a look at that data to see if, if it's, you know, in the fairness of.
I have, I have no problems waiting for two weeks, just two weeks. There's an agreement, we wait two weeks and bring this back up.
So, we, we. We have a public hearing published for this, so can we take public comment, Nina? That, because I do have four people signed up to speak, and we did advertise the public hearing. Can we take the public comment and continue the public hearing?
Yeah, you could do either, or you could continue or before or after that, um, and then when you make a motion, because it's been noticed already, make sure it's to continue the public hearing to, to August fourth, I think it is.
Okay.
July twenty-first.
I'm rushing our life away. All right. Do you mind if we go ahead and take the public comment, since we have people here that have signed up? Then we can make a motion to continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
Yeah, also, I, I would, if we're gonna hear a, a public comment, then I'd actually like to hear Frank's comments as well.
Okay.
To take them all together. And then we can decide next time.
Okay.
We could, we could.
Can we then have Frank's presentation up, Rob? And then we'll, it's not lengthy. At this later, I think after ten o'clock, I should be able to call you guys by your first names.
Yeah, I should be able to.
I think the formality should be relaxed. What did you say?
I said I should be allowed to open.
All right. If we have, go ahead, Frank, it's, you're on.
All right, I, I will be very quick and I appreciate everybody's patience, thank you, Mayor Protem, City Council, members in the audience, our citizens. Our city is currently engaging in a review of the city policy regarding short-term rentals, its impacts, availability, solutions, and options that may lead to modifications to our city code, business licensing requirements, staffing, and other regulatory measures. Allowing a three-month moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of all applications for short-term rentals will permit city staff and city council to collectively develop and implement consistent regulations concerning short-term rentals without further jeopardizing our city code. This only affects new licenses being issued. If I go to the seconds, next slide, please. It's like one of those. Thank you. No, they're like messing around. Planning's back there, so you know this is gonna be an issue. So, I'm a, a couple of the definitions here that I'm gonna go through real quick. These are what our districts are, what our city is made of, we have, uh, as you all know, many districts that are, uh, either residential neighborhoods or businesses. Uh, these next couple of slides are just definitions of our neighborhoods. Uh, this first one's a suburban residential district. Uh, these are typically single-family homes and basically, uh, acre lots. Uh, you can read the permitted uses, there's an actual table we'll get to later that actually shows and designates what's a, what's actually allowed in these neighborhoods. Uh, next slide, please, is the urban residential district, which is a more congested neighborhood with single-family homes, typically, uh, seventy-five hundred square, seventy-five hundred square feet areas are, it's probably larger than that, but let me read just to be sure. Yep, that's good enough. Seventy-five hundred, yeah, seven thousand, yep. And then, of course, that also, uh, has consistent with the table that shows actual permitted use in that neighborhood. Next slide, please. Uh, the next one is the actual multifamily residential. Now, in our, uh, table of, um, descriptions of what's actually allowed within our city and our suburban, uh, residential and commercial areas. It specifically, uh, there are five residences that are neighborhoods with single-family homes or multifamily homes and, uh, our mobile home parks. Uh, go to the next slide, please. So, the next slide is actually taken directly from our taxes and revenue, uh, language. Uh, it specifically talks about lodges and ends under a single management at a short-term basis, with a room, motorhome, guest house. Uh, so these are the, uh, actual definitions which is held in our code. Please go to the next one. Uh, the next one's actually the lodging tax, it shows that it's a, uh, five and seven tenths percent per short-term residence. It tells you exactly what's allowed and where that, uh, tax money goes to after it's collected. Uh, you can go to the next slide, please. The next slide is actually the district, the, excuse me, the districts that we actually have in our city. Those are what is on our planning charts that shows you what's exactly allowed in each one of these districts. Please go to the next slide. This is the actual districts, if you look on the left side, you'll see the zoning districts, you'll see the permitted uses. In this particular case, I've only ruled out lodging, because that's the only thing that's actually matches anything for short-term rentals or business rentals for lodging businesses. You can see that all of the actual districts within our city that have to do with single-family homes or multifamily homes, or just where people live within our neighborhoods, there is no lodging allowed. The only lodging is in the commercial districts, and that has to be permitted or conditionally permitted, which means you have to have permission to do it. So, um, last, uh, next slide, please. Uh, short-term lodgings are construed as lodging in the Business Tax Code, and consistency demands they be considered as lodging in the planning code. Based on our fair reading of our Title eighteen, short-term lodging businesses are defined as entities as lodging and ends and are only be allowed and operated in the same areas at the bed and breakfasts and other lodgings, which are usually and currently permitted. This moratorium is is requested to be approved to allow the city and city council to make adjustments to our ordinances and rules, ensuring the city is issuing business licenses within our code. It is not fair to the citizens of Woodland Park or the possible STR owners to continue to issue these business licenses out of code. The last slide, thank you.
And that is the, that is one of the drone designs that were was done at the Symphony Above the Clouds on Tuesday evening. It was a fabulous show. Anyway, I'm off topic. All right, counsel, any comment at this point before I open the public hearing? All right.
I I guess only.
Yes.
Not to, not question to Frank's, but to the city, we had to to a morning session and an evening session with fact-finding of the citizens. We're talking about the possibility moving this forward to when we can we expect that data and that presentation to know?
We we are planning on bringing that to you on July twenty-first at a, an additional joint work session between you all and the planning commission.
Before the council.
Before, yeah, before the earlier council meeting in two weeks. So Grace and Rob are very quickly grinding through it.
Anything else, counsel? All right, I'll open the public hearing and I have Ms. Stinner signed up to speak on this issue. If you'd like to start us off, please.
Tricia Stinnard, resident of City of Woodland Park, eight zero eight six three. Good evening again. So I'm going to give a little history to the freshman counselors, which would be Mr. Ott and Mr. Connors, who brought this to us. I'm going to give the history that starting back in August of twenty twenty-one, the planning commission was approached by Jerry Penlin and a few other people. And some of us put a lot of time and effort into developing a reasonable list of conditions for these short-term rentals because the city council would not address this at that time. And we thought we came up with a reasonable roster. Michael Lawson, I think you were somewhat involved with this if I'm not mistaken. And it was a list of maybe ten, I'm going to call them requirements, but these weren't actual agreements, except that it was, we were told as a group that developed this, that this list was now going to be actively. It was going to be given to people who came in to to buy their short-term rental operators' business licenses for the city of Woodland Park. I guess some of us backed off a little bit thinking, well, it's not a moratorium, but there are at least reasonable conditions we can ask of short-term business operators, especially if a condition of licensing is is based on these conditions. Until we catch up with our with our city zoning ordinances, we accepted that to be acceptable. I just found out on Wednesday at Mr. Lawson's meeting, which was very good, by the way, the staff did an excellent job moderating those those meetings. That list hasn't been given out to people who have been purchasing business licenses to run their short-term rentals. Let me tell you what you're in for now. There's one lady, she and her husband started out a small operation. It was their family home. I think they have a teenage son or something and they let, they rented out one bedroom in their house. And they got a pretty good taste of what short-term rentals could be all about. And they saw the opportunity for advancing their their income in their family. And they bought one or two more properties. She was sitting across from me Wednesday in our group table and having our meeting, the community engagement over short-term rentals. And she was flabbergasted when I asked her, well, did you agree to this when it was presented to you? She said, I was never shown that. I said, did you take out thirty-year mortgages on your property? We certainly did. Multiples, multiples. Did you know that a business license is renewable year by year? No, I didn't know that. There's a problem. I think the moratorium is long overdue. I understand all the reasons why the city protests moratorium in a global sense and why council didn't want to bring this to to an agenda item until after the election. But I'm going to say the same thing I said in January to this council. You're setting yourselves up and now you've implicated yourselves because you have been issuing business licenses for businesses that aren't legal occupancies in most of our neighborhoods. And most of these properties are not in commercial zones. They're in our residential neighborhoods. So I want to alert council, and I'm sure Mr. Lawson, when he summarizes this, he's gotten the same feedback I'm giving you now. I would appreciate this moratorium. I would appreciate cutting off the the opportunity for people to come back and sue us because we are selling business licenses for occupancies that are not legal in our residential neighborhoods. And I know the city has been short-staffed. I hand it to Mr. Lawson for taking this issue up. And you kind of got blindsided, Mr. Lawson. I think you inherited this, as you have with some other problems, and you've handled it really well. I strongly recommend that council passes this moratorium. I strongly recommend that you leave it flexible because you might not get all your answers in in three months. It might be closer to six months. I understand that you might be interfering with the perception of property rights, but you're not. You're not revoking anybody's property rights. You're just stopping the flow of a potential liability that you have created by selling these licenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stinner.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Mac McVicker.
Good evening. My name is Mac McVicker. One three seven one nine Hedy Road, Woodland Park, Colorado, eight zero eight six three. I hope I can remember everything I was going to say because it's past my bedtime. I'm in favor of your moratorium. And I would graciously and willingly be glad to help you formulate some of these rules from a building standpoint. You talk about property rights. This house is owned, single-family residential in most cases. You've done nothing to take that away from these people with this moratorium or any other rules you impose on it because they could always revert back to single-family residents. My wife and I babysit her sister's dogs and and her husband's dogs when they go on trips on the road off of Masters, street off of Masters. Imagine our surprise just a month ago. We're going for a walk on a Friday afternoon. There were eighteen cars at this one house corner of Masters and Research or Woodman Valley Ranch Road at that point, eighteen cars. Could not believe it. I happened to ask one of them, was it a birthday party or something? No, we're from out of town, short-term rental. They probably violated several city ordinances on that. And I hope as you go forward with your rules that will be enforced going forward, you follow the same rules that keep somebody from putting eighteen adults in one house. That's already on the books. You have a limit. And, you know, I looked at that street, Masters, how would you get a fire truck through here right now? It would have been very tough to turn that corner. So go forward with your your moratorium and coming up with rules. And if these places are going to be something other than single-family residents, actually, they're a business. They should have to meet the International Building Code, which is for commercial buildings, not for single-family, which is the IRC International Residential Code. That's where your, some of your liability may come in, is if you let them have these buildings and they don't have enough egress and fire alarms and smoke detectors and all that, which a commercial building would have. You spent a lot of time here tonight. A lot of work was invested between the, I think his name was Joe, the developer, Trout Haven or. Spur say. Lot of time spent by the planning council to put these buildings up to meet all the codes the city has in place. Yet these people can buy a single-family residence, basically turn it into a commercial property as a lodge and not have to comply with any of that. That's not a property right. That's an abuse of a property right. So please go forward with your moratorium and hash this out and get this under control. To me, it's out of control from what I've seen on a couple of places in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac.
Thanks, sir.
All right, next we have Peter Trelo, Treloir. How'd I do? That's what I said. Please tell me how to say it correctly.
Treloir.
Treloir, thank you.
Hey, thanks for what you guys do. I I I appreciate it. I thought I'd just throw out a an opinion. I wasn't sure if I was going to be the only one. But I happen to be not only a three-decade resident of Teller County. I own commercial businesses. I own residential in town, out of town, and I am a happy short-term rental owner. So I thought maybe there'd be some benefit to hearing from somebody that comes from that angle. I own properties up and down the pass, Teller County, El Paso County. And I honestly like to think that we do it right. My concern with not passing this moratorium, because I actually believe it's the right thing to do, is that because I see some of the things that some other folks have mentioned here tonight pop up. If there's no housing guidelines specifically outlining some some safety, what to do in case of an evacuation, occupancy, I think someone mentioned. These things make us all look bad. Community guidelines, I think you might, I think you may have touched on this. Boy, is that a shame that that wasn't communicated. Because I got my licenses. I do things by the book. My family, my future, my investments are right here. So the fight that maybe could be alluded to, sounds like I may be involved in that. I don't know. And I will fight for that because that's my family and that's my investment. But I'm also a proud member of our community. And again, I believe that we do it right. I think as you go through this process, please consider a high barrier of entry to this business. It shouldn't be a low fence. Do you guys know what I mean when I say that? Because I see people that are renting out their garage and they promote a Pike's Peak view, but that's only when you lift the door up and stick your head underneath. Hey, there's Pike's Peak. I mean, come on, you know, I I say that jokingly, but with a little sense of seriousness as well. I think it's a little scary what we see there. And I think it is an opportunity for Woodland Park to stand tall and set the bar. I really don't care what happens in other towns. I care what happens in my town. So I wanted to share that with you. And in addition to that, you know, just remember, this isn't because of an Airbnb company. This isn't because of VRBO. This isn't because of just a bunch of property owners having a wild idea to make much money. This is a consumer-driven activity. If people didn't want this kind of short-term rental, it very simply, the business and the income flow would not exist. So we have to address it because it's good, because it's 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 already here and it's only going to get larger. So, you know, one, I was reading something interesting just a week or so ago. Marriott Hotels is going to get in on this. They've already actually approached us with some of our other properties that are outside. So you're going to see a Marriott potential brand on a property. Do you think that carries a bit of weight to the consumer? Yeah, it's it's coming, folks. There's over twenty-five different booking platforms out there. If you don't get ahead of this now, and I really think you don't have a choice except to put a moratorium on it. I really don't. I think you need to just stop the, stop whatever's happening and get it into the books. Because, again, I believe that I do it right. I believe I offer a fabulous service. I put, on average, over sixty thousand dollars into each one of these properties. And that's not the, and that doesn't include actually the expense of my staff for cleaning and quality assurance and safety and all that kind of good stuff. I put my money where my mouth is for this and I've done it by the book. So please don't pull that rug out from underneath me because you will get a fight. But I think the opportunity is now. Pass the moratorium. Let's draw a line in the sand and get it right. And I think you got a bunch of people here that'd be willing to help you. And I would certainly be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more, Arnie Sparnens, please. One more signed up. I know the room's full of people waiting to talk. Just waiting on Arnie to get up there and get ready.
All right, thank you. And even though it is after ten o'clock, I will say, honorable Mayor Pro Tem and honorable City Council members. My name's Arnie Sparnens. I reside at twenty-six twenty-one Vista Go and Court in Woodland Park. And so, you know, thank you, Councilman Connors, for what you presented. That saved me a lot of materials I'd have to otherwise cover. So I won't, I won't go through that in terms of, you know, what's permitted under our current zoning or not. I do want to, before I even get into what I wanted to think through is, the question came up about what is the urgency? Well, the urgency in our case is, you know, we've been, we've had our house now, I'm about, you know, a couple of months shy of twenty years. And with the introduction in like a valley setting of one short-term rental that doesn't conform to theirs, the neighborhood characteristics have negatively and adversely changed in terms of noise, road blockage, and a number of other issues. And right now, there's two properties in our neighborhood. It's a small neighborhood, just, you know, two dead-end streets, basically. Two other properties that are turning now and seems like new properties that turn, you know, tend to be sucked up by investors, whether private or not. And so even a delay of two more weeks, you know, in terms of implementing implementing a moratorium means that much more adverse, uncontrolled impact into the neighborhood before we get our rules in place. I I do want to thank the city because I, you know, had the opportunity to participate yesterday, you know, in the community conversation around what to, you know, how do we address short-term rentals? And it's the right thing to do. I mean, I was impressed with the course of action that the city has laid out. It's very actively seeking inputs from from everybody in the community, you know, representing a lot of different perspectives. But I think in that, in that quality, but I mean, but where we stand right now is fundamentally, you know, it's not, gee, this would be nice to have. I mean, we're broken right now. I mean, our zoning ordinances, as Councilman Connors pointed out, you know, you know, we, you know, I wasn't kidding about saving a lot of stuff, you know, in terms of getting into lodging or zoning tables and stuff like that. You know, they're not there. I mean, you know, it's it's not in there. So it's a, it's a non-conforming use right now that we're allowing to perpetuate and we actually endorse it through licensing it. And so, you know, thus the moratorium. And people I've heard, like even heard at the community input yesterday, it's like, well, this is a new concept. It's like, well, but, you know, we do have some definitions in the zoning that pretty well talk about transients, you know, you know, transient use. It talked about lodging. And so, you know, we've dealt with as a city and, you know, hats off to the city in the past. When other new things have come up, you know, the one that, you know, a key driver always is, you know, our housing crisis. I mean, it's it's a problem. And the city looked at it at one point, they, the whole concept of accessory dwelling units. And that, that was a new one. And, you know, with accessory dwelling units, you know, the city, you know, took the time to work. you know, took the time to work through, you know, it's a gap, you know, we have, we have a housing need, it's a gap. What do we do? Same opportunity that we have uh, right now. Uh, we didn't go against zoning, we fixed the zoning first. And then we, then we allowed, then we allowed that to come in there. And I think, you know, if you look at, you know, many of the concepts that even were codified with dealing with ADUs, you know, could also apply to what we're doing with, with SSTRs. I mean, they, you know, they had owner occupancy requirements, limits on number of occupants, you know, I think four in that case, you know, strict parking requirements, density controls, which talked about different saturation points. I mean, all things that, you know, makes sense. And so let's let, let the city do the work that it can, you know, with the inputs from the community. You know, revisit our zoning ordinances, revisit our control regulations, you know, cause what we have, you know, is not working, yeah. Um, you know, the city, you know, for what we do do, I mean, they post on the website, they make some of the rules available on short-term rentals. You know, first one that's there, you know. Yeah. No, no more than five unrelated. Well, first of all, they require the business licensing. So even, you know, so I just thought, okay, let me just do a quick search, you know, before I come here today and look up, look, you know, go to Airbnb and sure. You know, here's a, here's a property that looks familiar. Oh yes, in the neighborhood. It's a, you know, it's the one that we hear all the time. And so do they have a business license? We can't even get an answer. Yeah. Um, I, I tried with the city. We can't, the neighbors can't be told whether these people have a business license or not, you know, let alone have to deal with, go, let alone have contact information in case there are problems. Yeah. And then, you know, if we look at further, you know, looking at what they say in short-term rentals, no more than five unrelated people can lodge in a single-family residential home. So when I did my search today, I said, you know, let me find a property for ten adults. And lo, lo and behold, that's the property that popped up. Yeah, yeah, ten guests, three bedrooms. Yeah. And this is, it's, you know, it's a single-family residential neighbor. And, and they do advertise that they don't mention that they have outdoor speakers, but they mentioned they have a hot tub outside, which overlooks the, you know, the quiet valley, uh, for everybody. So, but that's, you know, you know, it doesn't sound like it's limited to five unrelated people. Um, typically five, you know, five people, if they are related, you know, don't come in five or more cars, you know, you know, which, which is uncut, not, not uncommon out there. Um, the city also says on, on the website that no parking's allowed on the street. You know, so, you know, going back to that same listing, you know, that lo and behold is referring to the same property that's changed the characteristic and, and the accessibility of our neighborhood. Yeah. And the other things to, you know, other things to note, and this is in the listing here. During snow slash winter months, the driveway can be very slippery. You might need to park on the road and carefully hike up to the cabin. Yeah. Yeah. So, so what do you think happens? It's like, yeah, 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 especially, you know, when it snows, you know, people parking on a road. This is, this is one instance. And in, in both these instances, I first notified, you know, through Airbnb, cause they can, you know, make it seem like you're asking about a property, cause there's no other way to contact the owner. You know, it's like, yeah, I'm concerned. It's starting to snow. There's a couple of cars parked on the road, you know, driveway's already full with three other cars in there. You know, oh yeah, well, I'll let the renters know. Never move. This is taken the following morning. Um, you know, so not only was it, you know, you know, this, this is a narrow road. It's a downhill curve. And if it's slippery and you're going downhill into the curve where there's cars parked, you know, it's, it's, it's a recipe for problems, not to mention the fact that you can't get the fire trucks through and things like that. And so as it does here once in a while, it's snowed again. Yeah. A few weeks later, car parked on the street, you know, it's, you know, it's snowing out there, yeah. And, um, you know, in this particular case, not only was it a concern right at the point in time when the car was parked, as you can see in the picture, when the snowplow came through in the morning, it couldn't clear the street in that area because it was, you know, the road was blocked by the parked car. And so for weeks, you know, since it's a shady downhill curve for weeks, you know, you know, we had to deal with, you know, icy tricky, you know, curved roads, you know, going downhill. So it's, um, and I won't, you know, you know, so it's not working. There's no mechanism to escalate or to deal with problems. You know, the, the noise issue, that's another whole, whole thing in terms of what would be the hours. Um, I won't get into, but most people, if you rent a place with a hot tub, you know, your intention is to be outside and taking advantage of it, running the stereo and, and partying. I mean, it's so, are you gonna call the cops? Cause that's, you know, that's what we say we have to do, you know. So, you know, we don't have a viable process in place right now to address the challenges and what we're seeing with short-term rentals. You know, and so, yeah, we don't, and even what we think we have in terms of rules that are out there, we don't have the means to see if we're really enforcing them. And, um, the neighbors know. I can, I can guarantee the neighbors know that, you know, what's not happening there. So we need this three-month moratorium. And I, I would urge you to reconsider your delays and act now because you're not dealing with, you know, going back to the point, you're dealing with a non-compliant situation that you're just trying to get under control. And you've already got plans in place through your community process and through your planned work with, you know, your joint session with the planning commission, you know, then followed up by the planning commission work and the city council work. You've already got a process in place, you know, that's targeted to take care of the interests of the short-term rental owners as well as taking care of people, you know, that, you know, live in neighborhoods where you deal with non-compliant owners. So,
Arnie, are you about to?
And I'm done.
I don't mean to interrupt you because you have some very good information, but of time and fairness to the other speakers.
Look at what you do with ADUs and I think it's, you know, it's a good template to look.
Thank you very much. You've given us some great information. Sure appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna, um, clarify for the record that a business license is a public record. At any time, um, the citizen can do a records request and we can say yea or nay as to whether that business has a public, has a business license. Thank you. We do it all the time. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Did you get that, Arnie? What you said? Okay.
All right. Anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item? And online Suzanne, anyone?
No.
Thank you. I'll close this public hearing for now. Come, council, any, um, thoughts after hearing the public comments, um, on considering this this evening?
Yeah, I'll call the vote on this, um, from, from my perspective, based on what I said earlier. Just wanted to get more information. Um, I think they covered it pretty well. We heard from the business owner, we heard from some citizens. Uh, so.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion. If, if there's anybody else.
Unless council has any further comment or questions? Okay, thanks. We can have further deliberation after the motion if you'd like.
Okay. All right, I'll make it a motion to approve ordinance, uh, fourteen-two, uh, two-six, series two, twenty-twenty-two. In order to the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission acceptance processing and approval of applications for a short-term rental license.
I'll second. All right, council, any further discussion?
I just wanna state for the record why I'm against this moratorium. It's, I learned my lesson when we put a moratorium in place hastily to fix one problem. We didn't fully analyze the ramifications and we spent six months a year apologizing for our bad judgment in going too quickly on putting a moratorium in place. And this is the hundred and eighty days on the, the, RV camps. I'm a, I strongly believe in property owners' rights. I don't know what new assets we are going to have to enforce something that we haven't had assets to enforce all along, cause it's not on the books. It's an unnecessary moratorium. It's, it's not permitted. Um, so I just think it's.
Moratorium is to figure out how to get those assets. It's to figure out how to, uh, you know, manage code enforcement. What ordinances should be in place? Uh, this is different than a, than an RV park.
David, I'm gonna talk over you for a minute now.
Okay.
No, no, you talk over me when I was not finished.
That, about property owners' rights.
Point of order.
All right.
Talking. Point of order. Rusty's got the floor. Rusty has the floor.
David, if, can we let Rusty finish, please? And please keep your thought, if you would, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Now it's, I've lost my thought because of that.
Would you like to think about it? And come back?
Yes, I would now.
All right, go ahead, Davis. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
As far as property owner rights goes, like it was said, this is a, we're looking at residential areas here. There's zone residential. And they shouldn't have that kind of business operating according to what we've heard tonight. So if that's the case, um, you know, their property owner rights are not being violated because they can revert right back to a single-family home as they're supposed to be in the zone that they're in.
Thank you, Rusty. Did you remember what you'd like to say?
We do have a process and the planning commission is in the midst of that process. And we're waiting for the, for their input to us when we make changes to the municipal code like this with property rights.
Anything else?
Is not the planning commission just.
Well, I think we do have a joint work session July twenty-first with the planning commission and council, similar to what we did before, but it will be to receive information from the roundtables that were held yesterday, morning and evening. Um, and staff to share that feedback with us. Um, and then we'll have more conversation instead of just receiving information. I think it's more intended to receive more information and have a conversation. Am I right on that, Michael?
Is it incorrect to assume that the planning commission is gonna make a recommendation to us?
I would, I would say that they would because it does have to come through the planning commission before it comes to us as far as ordinance.
And they're supposed to analyze the problem that they're making a recommendation on.
I'm certain, I'm certain that the staff is working on that as well.
Then I stand firm on my statement. We have a process that we're going through with the planning commission.
Thank you.
Councilmember Connor. And I think we should wait and not be hasty in putting a moratorium in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Anyone else have any comment before vote? Yes.
Um, I also have a comment on this. I think, uh, firstly, I'd like to commend, um, council member Connors on pressing forward to bring this issue to the fore. I'd really like to see your ten points, um, Ms. Diner, that you have. I've never seen it. So, what I think I, I'm really enjoying about this process is this is an authentic community engagement process. And for us to think we have to come in as a council and, and act like, okay, we gotta do this now. Um, I share council member Neil's, uh, concern about that, cause we're, this is a very deliberate process. And it's not like, unfortunately, it could have happened last year. It could have happened last year and that would have, yeah. So obviously there wasn't, it wasn't ripe. It's right. This is a very right process now. Um, I am for less government. I don't feel that we know best. I think we have spent a lot of time getting the sort of input we've had tonight, also the sort of input we had at two session, two sessions yesterday. The data that's being collected, it's being collected. So to go in and say, oh yeah, we have to do this moratorium, the sky's falling. I asked Aaron yesterday, if you don't mind answering that question publicly. I said, Aaron, how many, um, since we talked about this moratorium, how many, uh, licenses went through? Cause we got, you, you gave a report of what the different, how much made licenses each month. Can you, can you recount that?
We've had twelve.
So this month we've had twelve?
Yes.
Or, uh, you're saying June, right?
June.
June, right.
Can I ask, uh, what ordinance are you using to issue those licenses?
Uh, off the top of my head, I do not know, but we do, we do have an ordinance for the.
And that's your point. I get, I, I, and I.
Get over the laws we are breaking now by issuing these licenses inside of code.
I, I understand it. I, I would like to finish my, my thoughts and my point on it.
Go ahead.
So I, I under, I understand the intent of the moratorium. I also see the active, very active engagement of this community. And each person quite respectfully is bringing in their point of view. We have the opportunity to sift it to sort of go, oh wow, that's good. Oh, that's not an anomaly. That's consistent. These pieces are coming forward and they're coming forward from the community. Uh, I am for less of a overhanded, uh, look. We're gonna tell you what to do. Frank makes a great case for the fact that there is, there is commercial activity happening in all the residential zone. That's very valid. We're getting there. Um, I am not for, uh, the, the sense of urgency. We have to tell you what to do. We've been down that road before on this council, not some of the new members, but some of the old members. And it, it was a lot of unwinding. So I, I respect the public process. I, I respect the fact that we can move forward in a, in a, um, methodical way and we'll come up with the best as a community. So those are my thoughts as we go into this vote.
Thank you. I see Karen at the podium.
Um, yeah, I was going to, um, provide a little context on timing and, and process in general.
Please.
As you all have noted, that this is a very, uh, community-focused, um, collaborative process that we're engaged in. And it is, um, occurring, I would say concurrently with planning commission and city council, which is why you're seeing those joint work sessions. So it's not like you're waiting for a product from planning commission at this point. Uh, those two boards are really working collaboratively, um, with all of the information that staff's been, been extracting from the community and, and, and about to bring forward to you all. Um, as you can imagine from yesterday, there was a, a great deal of information that was provided. Uh, that does take quite a bit of time to get that into a usable format and context to bring back at that joint work session. Um, and I believe, uh, Rob's, uh, objective is to really provide a, a staff recommendation at this work session. The joint work session, yeah. Um, and so from that, uh, I would, what I would anticipate happening, and that's just me as the little planning director, is, um, guidance from these boards back that say, yes, we want an ordinance drafted. We'd like to include these particular provisions. Um, and so that still needs to really be written at that point. It needs to be vetted through legal counsel. Um, and then we need to do all kinds of public notices around setting hearing dates and such. So it's not the wave of a magic wand. Um, the fact that, um, we've been doing as many steps as we have. Um, we are very well down that road in, in putting together a, a, a good end product for this community. Um, but it's just, it's just gonna take considerably more time and it's, it's not a speedy process as you, as I'm sure you all are noticing. So, anything else I need to expand on?
So. How many more licenses do you think will be issued before we actually fix this problem?
I have no idea, sir.
So, yeah.
All right.
So my, so my question, but actually the, on, on the same vein of council member Connors is, if licensing is issued on a annual basis, the bottom line as we fix this, there's gonna be a point where as the licenses are renewed come January or whenever that is, that's gonna be the point where all of these pieces are gonna come to bear. So we, thinking people are rushing in to get into the, uh, to get a license before the door closes, I think is, is, is not actually accurate from the standpoint, when we put all the pieces in place, if people aren't, aren't meeting those requirements, uh, they don't get a license. So it gets solved in the very process of renewal. Could you put your mic on so everyone can hear?
They're, they're issuing licenses now out of compliance. So I don't understand what you're talking about, these people who get issued licenses. Everybody who gets a license now are out of compliance with our code. So I, I'm having a hard time understanding what you mean by these new licenses. We don't have any way to issue a new license within code at present time. So there really is no reason to even issue these licenses, new licenses at this time.
So then why do a moratorium?
Because nobody will stop issuing licenses.
So, so if I could, you go ahead. Thank you. I have a couple of things. Rusty, um, I totally understand your viewpoint on the moratorium, but I, I, I have a different take on this particular one. I was one of four citizens that went through that previous moratorium. This moratorium is going to have a lot more stakeholders, a lot more people discussing this. If we, if we, if we issue the moratorium, we're gonna have a lot more citizen feedback. So I don't think we're gonna, I think we're gonna sidestep the screw-ups that we did in the previous one, because we really didn't have but four people through that whole process. Mike, myself, you, and a couple others, maybe six. So I think every moratorium needs to be taken on their own, its own merit, not because we screwed one up. I totally respect your, your view. So that's one. And I lost my train of thought on the other one, cause it's after ten o'clock. So your turn.
If it comes back to you, we'll give you that opportunity, Rusty.
Well, I keep hearing the words to fix the problem. Short term rentals, a moratorium, we're going to fix the problem. I don't think we've done step number one in a process flow. Define the problem. Did that ring a bell?
Yeah. Yeah. So the problem is we keep issuing business licenses against the existing code. To my, to, to me, if we all of a sudden stop issuing business licenses without a moratorium, we could be sued for arbitrary capricious because we've been doing it and all of a sudden we stopped. If we put the moratorium in place, we stop issuing the business licenses, then we can go look at the code. We can go deal with all of it and not have the problem of continuing to issue business licenses. Now, I get Robert's point too, that they expire in January, but still, we're still issuing licenses. So they just think if we stop, take a step, stop issuing the business licenses and so, and figure out what the problem is. And in three months or, or even two weeks, we did, or a month, we decide that there isn't a problem, we can always revoke it.
I have some thoughts.
Yeah. To the point of being sued.
I mean, that's.
I think you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. We could be sued if we put the moratorium in place because somebody could come in and say, look, you've been issuing out licenses and allowing people to rent, rental.
That's not true. Just, that's not true. The, I've, I've drafted moratoriums in, in all the towns and my cities who've, who have looked into short term rental ordinance. That being said, it's a policy decision, but absolutely not. There's authority to, to put a small pause for a few months to look at any time you're doing land use regulations. So that would, that would not be a successful lawsuit. That doesn't mean, I'm not telling you what to do, but there's definitely a liability there in terms of a, a short moratorium.
Okay. Because someone who owns a house
Yeah.
that they bought, knowing that they've been issuing, they've been allowing citizens to violate the code. Nobody's enforced the code. I mean, Frank, you're spot on. The, it's not allowed anyway. Somebody could build an argument that you've been allowing it, you've not, haven't been enforcing it. Now all of a sudden you put a moratorium saying, we're really good, meaning that you can't do this. I'm just.
So if I could just make a few points that I've kind of thought of while I've been listening to you all. Our business license ordinance is very, very minor. It's, it's very small and vague. It doesn't come with a compliance component to it. People used to call and say, like, we were the better business bureau. Can you shut this business down because it's doing this, this and this? It's not that kind of a business license. To be perfectly honest, the business license is in place to give us a vehicle with which to collect sales tax. And so it's really very benign ordinance. And so to harp on the business license ordinance really has, I mean, that's the vehicle we'll use not to allow someone to go into business. What's happening right now is the code is being violated because they are allowing a commercial use in a resident, residential zone. And they, by meaning us as a city, as an organization, we have not enforced the code because they are operating, I won't use the word illegally, but they are operating, doing something that is not a permitted use in a zoning, out of compliance. Thank you. We have something in place for massage therapists. It's a specific license with specific code enforcement issues for massage therapy licenses. So we, I, we recognized a special industry that needed more teeth or more compliance and more look before issuing a license, background checks, fingerprints, things like that. And so there's more review of that. I see as one of the components that we could look at is, and I don't want to solve the problem tonight and I won't go on forever, is to maybe put something in place to license a short term rental with criteria, regulations and some kind of thing to find a balance if we decide that this continues forward. Correct? I mean, that's one thing that we could do. The, the, I, before I heard the public comment I heard this evening, I did not support this. But I wouldn't make that determination or say it out loud because I wanted to hear the public and I wish there would have been more. But what I heard this evening has changed my mind. Because, and the reason is, is because it is not a long-term thing. I believe that the plan that we have to get through this project, we can do that within the ninety days. And we can come out of that being better stewards of the public as a whole in having addressed, and thank you, I really, I wish he was still here, the gentleman that has short, long-term rentals, that actually came in and supported this and really has some really, I wrote them all down, good points about this being a consumer-driven activity and an opportunity to really set the bar, a high barrier of entry, those kinds of things to consider through this process. So I have changed my mind and I will be voting to support this if we, this evening. Because I think we're going to do a really great job because of what we've done so far in addressing the, the proper way to address this and, and allow this to go forward if that's what we decide to do. So I just wanted to explain that and kind of say where I was coming from because I was with Rusty. Till, till I heard, heard what I heard yesterday at the tables. Because I didn't participate, I walked around and listened periodically, just mingling through the tables. And I, I don't think, and, and believe me, I'm a real estate agent and I do a lot of business in this area and they are every day. People coming in, buying short-term. People are selling, selling more homes for short-term rentals than they are for residential occupancy in a specific price range, not so much, I mean, I'm selling, I have one for one point two million on the market and the guy's trying to buy it to make it a short-term rental.
That'll be advertised with like a hundred people.
So anyway, it is happening.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor Protem. We are, we are at eleven PM and we need to vote for you all to continue the meeting.
We won't be long.
We have one item and after this vote, one item and reports.
So we can extend the meeting to, let's. A motion.
A motion.
And who's the second?
David.
Catherine's just gone.
As the motion maker.
Okay.
Okay. And so the motion is to extend to eleven thirty PM, please.
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries on. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Is that all? Any, any, any other comment from any other council? All right. Suzanne, would you call the question, please?
Sure. We have a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty-six, series twenty twenty-two on the table and it was made by council member Ott, seconded by council member Nakai, and you may vote.
Maybe? I didn't get it.
I'm just waiting for one council member to vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Council motion has passed four to two with council member Neil and council member Zuluaga voting no.
Thank you, council, for a good conversation. I look forward to working through this moving forward with you all. All right, council, we're on new business. We've already done item A. We're going to ten B. Approve resolution eight ninety-four, series twenty twenty-two of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, authorizing a transfer of a tract to the city for a detention pond and associated drainage facility. Ben?
Sorry. So thank you. This is more of a housekeeping matter for the detention pond that we have. We have about sixty-two detention ponds within the city, both public and private. This is a public detention pond that just needs to be transferred over the city. It's, it's for the development over on Thunder Ridge and it's, it's more just to make sure that we have it in the city system. We can maintain it. And this is a relatively normal process. It's gone through the two-year warranty period that it was supposed to and been inspected by city staff.
Thank you, Ben. I've sold that property adjacent to that twice. And it's always come up and been an issue and I've had to explain that it belongs to the city, but they don't own it yet. So how do you do that? So thank you.
And I had a field trip because that's at the end of my cul-de-sac and they cut every tree down and dug a big old hole and then put a fence around.
Yep.
Well, hopefully the third time that we saw this, it's a, we can have it all maintained nicely.
Council, any questions?
I have one and I learned this question from the previous city manager and city attorney.
Awesome.
The cost to maintain this tract of land that we would be accepting, has that already been built into the budget?
So that's what we usually do is pay for that out of that drainage fund. And we identify the maintenance projects through that drainage master plan that was established in twenty fourteen. It identifies everything from cleaning small culverts to detention ponds to major capital projects that need to be done. And there are hours associated with maintaining the detention ponds. Each pond is a little bit different depending on the scope of what needs to be done to clear the outlet. So we haven't done a full analysis of each one of these ponds. This is yet another thing we could look at capturing in the future. But this is all part of that detention maintenance by the staff in that drainage fund.
But your current budget you, that you have planned to spend does not include maintaining that at this point in time.
Well, most of that maintenance is not necessarily expenditures in every, in anything else but salaries and fuel. And we don't break down that expenditure by each specific location. So there's not like, there's not concrete work that needs to be done that we can really quantify in units. It's essentially the crews going out with the vehicles, doing the grading maintenance, pulling that material out and, and regrading and adjusting to the original grades, making sure it's functioning. It's, it's mainly removing sediment. So a lot of it is just hours expended, not necessarily materials that are tracked towards that.
Yeah. And forgive me for asking the question to the council members. It's just Jason Myers and Darren actually pulled me aside when we inherited a piece of land and, and they said, you know, there's a hidden cost. So always make sure you ask the question, has that been factored into your budget before you do it? That's why the question.
Yeah.
Previous experience.
Yeah. And it's a great question. And as we start collecting data in the future, maybe if we move towards having an asset management plan or we can start doing case studies where we, we track hours spent towards specific infrastructure. We can say, hey, this is how long it takes to do a culvert. This is how long it takes to do an asphalt patch. This is how long it takes to maintain a pond of, you know, this tier of threshold. I would love to parse that down and that's what we're moving towards. It's just, I can't provide that data to you right now of exactly what that expenditure is.
It's getting late.
It is.
We're playing basketball with the trash. Thank you, Ben. Council, any further questions of Ben?
No.
No. I make a motion to approve resolution number eight ninety-four, series twenty twenty-two as written.
Thank you. Any further?
No. Well, you could, but.
It's administrative. Anybody want to talk about that? Because I messed up. Thank you. Um, I have a second by council member Zuluaga. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, could we have the vote, please, Suzanne?
I think we already have it.
Oh. It's even on my screen.
Could I ask Suzanne while we're voting, the moratorium goes into effect?
Seven days.
Seven days.
I just want to make sure the public hears that.
Thank you. All right, council. That's all the business we have this evening. Yeah. Motion's passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going into high gear. I'm tired. Events, I'll share, for the mayor's report, I will, Mayor Protem's report, excuse me. Events this Friday as always and through September is the farmer's market from eight AM to one PM. On July ninth, eleven AM to two PM at the Uptown Cultural Center is the Woodland Music Series. The wind symphony was lovely the, on Tuesday evening, by the way. Seven thirteen twenty-two, we have the community engagement forum with our illustrious chief of police, Chris Deisler. At, from six to seven PM at the Youth Past Cultural Center. I promise I won't be there.
When is it?
Thank you.
Sorry. July, when?
Thirteen.
Thank you.
If I come, I will shut my mouth. July sixteenth, at the Ute Past Historical Society has their triennial margarine pine, Malgr- Malgrin Pines Tour. And they still have tickets available. I saw that today on Facebook and everything on Facebook is true. And that is on the seventeenth as well. And then Mr. Sparnins was kind enough to share with us the grief support in Woodland Park. Voices of Grief Documentary Film Screening and Discussion. It's an excellent film if you haven't seen it. Tuesday, July twelfth, one to three PM facilitated by Kathy Sparnins, grief educator and film executive producer. At the Woodland Park Library, Sandy King Meeting Room, a dear friend of me and this community. Open to the public light refreshments will be served. There's also a grief support group Thursday afternoons for six weeks, beginning July twentieth, one to three PM. RSVP to Kathy for further details, seven one nine six five nine zero four four seven. Or email kathy dot sparnins, S P A R N I N S, starts with a K, kathy at voices of grief dot org. Thank you, Arnie. That I think is all I have. I'm clueless. Go ahead, Mr. Connors.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Turn my microphone back on. I just got a couple of things. I'll be headed to Fort Carson on the thirteenth for their opening up their new brain, traumatic brain center. So we've been invited. We'll also be going to the headquarters battalion change command ceremony on the nineteenth. And on Saturday, that is it the tenth or the eleventh, sorry, Sunday, the tenth is the scout sports day at one o'clock at the Blue Dugout at the Sports Center. Or Sports Field.
The Meadowwood?
Meadowwood, Sports Field. So if you'd like to be with the scouts, that's a Sunday at one o'clock. That's all I have. Thank you. Appreciate everybody hanging out this late.
So I have Main Street. We, we had a good meeting, staff and Lori from Main Street with Dola to try to reset the, to reset the bar and everything. So we've scheduled another meeting with Dola and whoever comes, wants to come for the twenty-sixth of July at two PM, I believe, Michael?
I think so.
Okay. And then we have a public work session with Dola coming to present to us in a work session, basically their vision of what we think we should do collectively as, as a, as a goal, September first at about five thirty. And did I get that right, Michael?
Yeah, I, I would, I don't know if I'd say what their, their vision is, but kind of a briefing on the program
Yeah.
And what, what it's meant to accomplish and maybe how some other structures have worked.
Tired. Thank you. Okay. And that's all I have.
Good morning. Okay. All right. I have one, the ASN reported this with the Downtown Development Authority. We held our meeting on July fifth at seven thirty. It was a regular meeting. It, it was called to order by the vice chair, Jerry Good, because the former chair had not been reappointed. All members were present except Rebecca Radel. She had previously been excused for a family vacation. The first order of business then was the election of officers initiated by the vice chair. A new chair was elected. It is Tony Perry. He is the new chair of the DDA. The new chair assumed the responsibility of presiding over the remainder of the meeting. And he proceeded to run through the remaining officer appointments. The vice chair was John Gamelke. The secretary is Rusty Neal. The treasurer is Rebecca Radel. There was a new development proposal. This is probably the most important thing. There was a new development proposal. This is probably the most important thing, uh, to, for everybody to wake up for. The albatross that's been sitting with the DDA is at, that, uh, Woodland Station. And we have two development proposals for the Woodland Station that were presented. Now, prior to any discussions of the potential votes, David Mihares and, uh, Arden Weatherford recused themselves from the remainder of the agenda item. The two projects are referred as the Wagner Project, uh, led by Derek Wagner and Mark Weaver, and the Williams Project, which has Chad Anderson, Mike Williams, and their other partners. Because of feedback from both the DDA and council members and citizens, the June and July 2022 DDA meetings have been posted, thanks to the, uh, help of the city staff to make that a high priority so that citizens can go out to the city website, pull down the Youtubes and actually see the presentations of the two proposals. I'm not going to talk about them in here. They are available and we're working to get the slide decks added. The DDA decided that there would be a work session to be conducted in approximately two weeks to establish the next step in the process for making a selection of the two projects or the two offerings. And I was tasked to get a preliminary, um, input from each of the city council members. I have been working with, um, those that have, were in attendance. They have provided some thoughts. Uh, I have received, uh, Frank's comments and I am waiting for three other council members who are working to get that to me. The meeting was adjourned. Thank you.
I was not one of them, correct?
You were, we spoke.
Yes, so you already have my.
I have yours. I have Frank's, I have Robert's, and I have mine at a very generic high level where we're at.
Thank you.
We don't, uh, I don't have anything for the historical committee. That meeting was moved to the 11th due to the holiday. So, uh, next Monday, you're welcome to come and sit in the committee. Where are you next time? I do have gray hair.
Thanks, David. Mr. Zulawaga.
Yes, indeed. Once again, the, uh, keep Woodland Park beautiful, uh, committee met at the same time we did, so. I'm trying to get that changed. But the annual citywide cleanup is Saturday, August 27th, from 9:00 to 1:00. They really like some large groups to register. So if you're part of a Kiwanis or, uh, some other group, a church group, whatever, and you'd like to, uh, help with citywide cleanup, which one, the Scouts, yes? Saturday, August 27th, 9:00 to 1:00. So, uh, you can email, uh, Grace, she's gone home, I see. GJohnson@cityofwoodlandpark.org, oh, done.
Oh, cityofwp.net, city-woodlandpark.org, either way.
Oh, new email addresses. Okay, cityofwp.net. That's all I have.
Thank you, city manager, I mean attorney.
What's your name? Who are you?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you. City manager and staff.
So it's been a very busy week. I'll be brief. We, we had a great event on, on the 4th. Thank you to, to Gil Gross, Soar and all for volunteers for putting together a great event. Thank you to our staff as well, uh, who, who made the park look amazing. Uh, July 5th, something above the clouds was super cool. Our unofficial official count was 1,000 people attended. Somewhere in there. And we had, uh, a drone aerial light show for the first time, went about 13 minutes. Uh, all I heard was oohs and ahs and it was pretty, pretty cool. We, we all have videos. If, if you weren't able to make it, we'll, we're, I think we're working on stitching them together so we can have the whole thing.
I'll tell you, as we were, the guild, when we were cleaning up our booth and all posters and all of that and people were leaving, lots of folks commented on how much they enjoyed it and they even said they liked it better than fireworks. And that's so cool because for people with PTSD and dogs and things like that, it really, it really made for a nice evening.
So, um, we also have the privilege, uh, thanks to Phil Piles, our, our Public Works Superintendent. He brought the Woodland Park High School football and soccer teams to come pull weeds for like three hours. Three hours, uh, here, here on the grounds at Memorial Park, I believe they got 16 bags of weeds. They have to do that to help earn their letter for the year. And so we got nice, uh, slave, uh, free, I mean, community service labor. For, from our, our upstanding young folks there at the high school. And finally, we, we did have two, uh, what we call community conversations. There were, um, town hall roundtables, yeah, last night and yesterday morning at the U-Pass Center. Uh, in total, I think we had about 50, 50 adults there that were talking. We had 17 in the morning, about, uh, 30, 32 in the evening. Great conversation. I appreciate the folks who were able to come from, from here. I was encouraged because we actually had some young families attend in the evening. There was a family there with about a three, three year old, about a six month old, some teenagers. Yeah, unreasonably well behaved. I, I don't know what they gave for the kids, but. Me too. So, um, we, we were encouraged that, we, we got some great feedback. People were very respectful. We, we were encouraged and we look forward to using this, um, kind of as a template for, for other future big juicy policy issues as we move forward. So it's great, great time. That's all I got.
Thank you, Michael. Any staff?
No.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.